Good morning and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. As always, we will start with our invocation and our pledge. We'll call Pastor Don Steriano with Kingdom Life Christian Church to come forward. Please stand.
Good morning, everyone. As we are honoring Police Week, I just want to start out with this statement. The affections of my heart burn for all our local and national police officers and all of the agencies. In this present climate where there's much negative criticism and a notable amount of dislike and even hate towards police, I would affirm to those that are in this room and in the sound of my voice that guard the shield, the sentiment, that is not the sentiment of the majority of Americans. As in any occupation, there will be unfortunately a few who cast a stain on the wide-ranging canvas across our nation of noble policing. To my beloved police department family here in Bradenton and all who wear the gallant shield of service and protection, from our chief, the command staff, the seasoned veterans, and to the young officers filled with promise, and to every support department, you are loved, significant, needed, honored, and we celebrate you today. We thank the Heavenly Father for you today. You are heroes, divine agents of the Almighty God to sustain order on the earth. Please bow your heads. Father of heaven and earth, I lift up our valiant law enforcement officers before you now. I ask that you and all of heaven would take notice and honor this prayer for these who have vowed to dedicate their lives to serve and protect your children on the earth whomso you dearly love and cherish. I pray that your mighty hand and outstretched arm would go before them in the battle for justice, anointing them as your ambassadors of divine order so to foil the deeds of those who plot evil. I ask of you Holy Spirit to envelop each of them with the peace of Christ that transcends understanding, guiding them with the wisdom of Solomon as they guard the cities of our nation. Grant them the courage and strength of King David to defeat the Goliaths of wrongdoing and impart in them the loving kindness of David the Shepherd, to serve with compassion and a gentle hand, discerning when to be as a lion and when to be as a lamb, and may they serve with the heart of a king and lead with the heart of a servant. As they continue to go on their unselfish assignments, I declare Isaiah 54, verse 17, over them all, "That no weapon formed against you shall prosper; and every tongue which rises against you in judgment shall be condemned. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and their righteousness is from me," says the Lord. I pray that you would dispatch and assign warring angels of great might and power to protect each of them from harm. I declare over them all long, strong, blessed, and prosperous and fruitful life. In the name of Jesus the Christ, our Lord and King, I pray this all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Don. And if you can join all of our police officers in leading us in the pledge this time?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We have three proclamations on the agenda this morning. The first one is Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Whereas members of the Florida law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. And whereas it is essential that all Florida citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their unwavering commitment to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas it is appropriate to commemorate police officers, past and present, who have dedicated their service to their communities and demonstrated utmost courage in preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And whereas on May 15th, we honor all peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Police Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in activities honoring our police and peace officers. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
And who do we have to accept this this morning?
We have members of the Bradenton Police Department who, as you can see, come in all shapes and sizes. Mayor, Council, I wanted to bring everybody up here as a reminder of your proudest employees of this city. And to the community, please turn around.
These are the folks who are willing to sacrifice their lives for you each and every day. Doesn't matter who you are, what economical path you have come from, they will lay down their lives to serve and protect. That is who we are. That is the Bradenton Police Department. Unfortunately, if you look across America, there's officers throughout this nation missing from these ranks because they've done just that. They've given their lives, they've sacrificed everything in the service to their country and to this nation. Thank God, by the grace of God, that hasn't happened here in this city, but I just wanted to bring everybody up as a reminder of what we're willing to do for you all and for everybody that lives in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. Thank you Chief, and thank you to all the officers. One thing that's notable is that it's not just a dedication that they have for their career now, but there's quite a few faces in that crowd that are not on their first career with the department. Bill Burris, just in my pure line of sight right there is, you know, he's been around and he's back to help us in a civilian role, but to help everybody at the department get their daily work done. He serves as our quartermaster, he's back in records, and people don't know, it's the records department at the police department is much like the US Mail, it does not stop. So, I'd like to thank everyone again for all their service.
Thank you. And I brought everybody up, not just, not just the sworn officers, but all the folks in the agency who support the officers and allow them to go out there and do their jobs. So collectively, we all stand together.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Just want to say thank you. Please do your jobs as safely as you can, go home to your families, and come back and do it again the next day, please.
Councilwoman Coachman?
Thank you. Chief, you said all shapes and sizes, that's what family is all about. And this part of your family is extremely proud and appreciative for everything you do, every second of the day. Just can't tell you how much we appreciate you. I personally appreciate you.
Councilwoman Coker?
Yes, thank you. I mean, that, that word just doesn't really, isn't enough of a word to tell you how much we appreciate. I mean, you are a big part of why Bradenton is the way it is because you are keeping us safe and making us friendly, and I, I just don't know how to express it any better, but thank you and to you and your families, and please stay safe.
Councilwoman Moore?
I, I don't think I can say it any more eloquently. I love the analogy to a family. I'm proud to be a part of your team, and I can only say simply, thank you.
And obviously, a lot's been said from everyone here, some with a lot of experience in the police force over the years, but now fortunate and grateful enough to be up here as a citizen. Saul, what a great job he did for many years in our police force, and so I'm looking out there, who's the next council person? Is there anybody out there?
Nobody.
But, but I'm proud to, you know, through our charter and the way things are, is to be your kind of leader through the police chief and that. So, we're just proud of every one of you because it takes, takes a village, and we have a great village and, and just, you know, from, from all of you, and appreciate it. And I know that, you know, we're going to have ups and downs, but that's what a family is. So, we appreciate what you've done and what you'll continue to do, and as it was said already, please be safe, and, you know, we know you always look out for your brother or sister. So, thank you for what you do and, and enjoy the week as we always do. So now let's all get together as much as possible, and then the council will get up here behind you so we're a little higher since we have a big group and get a picture.
Because some of us are sports car abled and won't show up if we're not standing up here.
Kind of squeeze in as much as possible, come around back here.
Kick this Michael Coors out of the way. Hey, how are you?
If possible, yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next proclamation is for Jewish American Heritage Month, May 2023. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month was first proclaimed by President George W. Bush in April 2006. And whereas American Jewish Community was founded in 1654 by a group of 23 Jews comprised of men, women, and children, they were committed in their goal of fleeing persecution and finding a new way of life where they could freely contribute to their communities. And whereas over the past 369 years, Jewish Americans have served in government and the military, won Nobel Prizes, headed universities and corporations, and countless other vocations, and continue to be active citizens. And whereas Jewish Americans have found hope in America's promise of freedom, justice, opportunity, and religious liberty. And whereas the City of Bradenton wishes to celebrate and honor the contributions of Jewish Americans in our history. Together, all citizens will continue to thrive and prosper. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month in Bradenton, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the many sacrifices and contributions made by our Jewish American citizens. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Who do we have coming forward? Welcome. Please state your name and give us a little synopsis.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm Brian Lipton. I'm the Regional Director of the American Jewish Committee, AJC, for the West Coast of Florida, and Anne Verag is with me today, the Regional President of AJC for the West Coast of Florida, and we want to thank the mayor, the commission, the City of Bradenton for acknowledging May as Jewish American Heritage Month. As was just stated, Jews have been in this country for 369 years. This was a national proclamation that was started with President Bush in 2006 and has been continued by every president since then. What it does is it acknowledges the contributions that Jews have made in this country. We are proud Americans. My father is a veteran. Every one of us kids volunteer. My nephews are all Eagle Scouts. And what this type of proclamation does is that we get to learn from each other. There are many different types of heritage months, history months, and they're all important. We all know that the FBI reports have shown that hate crimes, especially religious hate crimes, are on the, are on the rise. In the United States, the number one hate crime of religion is against Jews, and that's important to acknowledge when there's antisemitism or attacks or Jew hatred, but it's also really important for us to learn about each other, all of us, so that it strengthens the fabric of this country which is based on diversity, and we truly thank you.
Thank you. You get to turn around and then we'll have Jeanie take a picture.
We appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great week. Madam Clerk?
Our last proclamation this morning is for Salvation Army Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2023. Whereas the Salvation Army was founded in 1865 by William Booth and continues to be a leader in serving the people of our community with unshakable faith, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities. And whereas in Manatee County, the Salvation Army offers emergency shelter and community dinners, as well as assist individuals to find sustainable housing. And whereas on average, they serve 150 meals each evening, and more than 75 people seek emergency shelter nightly. In addition, they operate youth mentoring programs, Angel Tree and Adopt a Family programs, and holiday kettle drives. And whereas the Salvation Army provides relief during natural disasters and crisis situations. Locally, they have approximately 400 volunteers dedicated to helping our community when the need arises. And whereas Salvation Army Week serves as a reminder to all Americans to give freely of themselves to help their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Salvation Army Week, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who renew the heart of our community by their quiet service and compassion. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have here today? Come forward.
Kelly French, and I'm joined by two of our board members, our Chair, Chris Williams, along with Sia McCoy, and our Volunteer and Special Events Coordinator, Ms. Carolyn Nielsen, also referred to as my right hand. We just want to thank you very much for your support in this proclamation, and also mention that on June 23rd, we will be celebrating our 100th anniversary in Manatee County. We will be planning several different festivities, kind of kicking off on June 2nd, which is Donut Day, where we will be having a Donut Day birthday party, and we will be inviting all of you. So, but again, thank you very much. We appreciate the acknowledgement and wish you a good day.
So, just a couple of comments, obviously, from some conversations we've had in the past. We're meeting today with another group with the chamber about affordable housing and what we can do, which I know plays a big factor in what you do. We also had a council of governments meeting last week that was discussed aggressively about affordable housing, and we as a body up here are very supportive of what's next steps, not two years from now, but two weeks, two months, you know, down the road. So, this board is very supportive of finding solutions to what we can do to make our city and county better for the people that need us most at the time. So, you know, I know there's been some, some times that people don't think that our hearts are in the right place. Sometimes tough love is love you have to give at first to get a better solution in the end, and so I think we're working towards that to make it better for all of us in this community while supporting all citizens and what they, what we can do to make it better as a collaboration with all municipalities and county government, because as we know, the county government has a lot deeper pockets than we do.
Yes.
So that's important. So, any other? Okay, well, thank you very much. If we can get you in the middle there and get a picture.
And we appreciate all those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
There are not any presentations on the agenda this morning.
Okay, and at this time, then we'll have citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepting, accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. So first, we have Bill Sanders. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes for the record.
Good morning, Bill Sanders, 2502 Riverside Drive. I see, Ms. Barnaby, you didn't get the message. White is the color of this morning. However you're dressed, it's pretty, okay. I'm here about a couple of things. One, I'm still, it was this time last year that there was a fraud discovered in our city. It was only about $50,000, but that's $50,000, still a lot of money to most people. And why we haven't concluded that investigation because the county has done something similar over there, it was over a million, and it was through a cyber hack to get in with probably a local developer. That one was Pat Neil, I don't know what ours, what account ours came in, that'd be nice to know that. So I'm asking if you would tell the public what the result of that is. And when I left office, we had about $58 million, what you call reserve, it's not all reserve, about $58 million. And we captured four million of it for hurricane mitigation in case that happens. But of that $58 million, I want the, the public needs to understand that 10 and a half million came from the sale of city properties for a development, and another 10 and a half million came from our federal government through ARPA. So, about almost half of the $20 million, $21 million came from other sources that weren't taxpayer input to it. So, we're not, wasn't as flush with cash as what we really perceived because we just received those funds in the past couple, three years. But what concerns me is things that's on the consent agenda. For example, we had a $48 million loan. There was a loan application, I don't know what the status of it is, if it was turned down, or if, if we're borrowing that, it's accepted, or we're going to take it. But now on this agenda, you have borrowing another 35 million, which takes us up to, what, 83 million and then 10 million in ARPA. And that was my projection, projection on the, based on what I've seen for our building of City Hall, et cetera. I would like to see that addressed to the public because we sometimes don't get the full story. We were told the air conditioner on top of this building cost a million and a half dollars, and it was only $100,000. So there's a trust factor that I and others have with getting the right information from, from the council, the mayor, and the city administrator. So, I'd like for you, when I sit down, to address some of these things so that we know and not put them on consent agenda.
Thank you. We have Wiley Green. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Wiley Green, 2015, 25th Avenue, West, Bradenton, Florida. Is it, which one is it?
It says Surplus Lot 1125.
Speaking of that particular area, it came up in council meeting last week, and I usually have a recording of the council meeting come on my phone, so sometime I get it Monday or Tuesday, so I wasn't aware that Mr. McClendon was going to bring it up, but I do thank him for his efforts. Still a lot of questions concerning this retention point, and some of you all haven't even thought about being at the council when I first started this project. I joined this church probably in 2001. I was at another church before that time, Gassimony, I'll talk about that later. But I had an opportunity to work with several of the public work directors, Earl Crowley, who's the building name, Matthew, Bill Taylor, John Cummings, Claude Tinkersley, and Mr. McClendon. Never have I seen, still been trying to acquire, when would this come up? Been asking. We've been good stewards of the property, we've been cutting it before we even got this agreement with the city. So, I've been trying since Councilman Golan to get some right answers, and it seemed like I can't. Really, really, it's a bad eyesore between two churches. I know I'm hearing that it may help other areas, but we got enough retention point around that area. Ninth Avenue, 10th Street, Ninth Avenue again, cross the street from Ninth Avenue. So why would we need that? Number two, before my timer, they redid the road. Could have put six feet retention storm drains in there. Number two, option B, since that wasn't properly done, maybe it was. We got a swell already there, you guys probably didn't, wasn't aware of that when you saw that picture. They could dig that deeper. That would save a lot. So we don't need that, that's going to be our sore, and if we have to live with that, I want to make sure you got your gold helmets and shovels on, take a photo off of that, and that's not really helping one of five or the city and not our two churches in that area that have been long established. If you had the time, you could look back, there was a bad situation from the beginning. The church was bought through Tropicana, two parking spaces, two handicaps, parking spaces only. I didn't find out until I became a member of the church, so, and we've been trying to buy the land, could have been $5,000 back then, now it's probably worth 30, and from what I'm hearing from the attorney, it's going to be a bidding war maybe, unless the church, council have mercy upon us.
All right, thank you. Next we have, is it Mary Ann Lydeem?
Oh, I forgot who I was bringing that one up on my next one.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Mary Ann Lydeem, and I live at 4301 Chinaberry Circle East. I am a senior citizen in that community. I'm also a disabled veteran. My concern is the plight that is in my backyard, it's a fence that is falling down. Behind that fence, you will see pictures, the homeless take up residency there, they leave everything you can imagine, they even cook out there, there's been mattresses out there. We have brought this to many people's attention in the city, and we've been told that, yes, we are investigating it, but we still live in this community and nothing has been done. We have noise factors with the racing of motorcycles that are using the entrance into River Isles, they race in the early mornings up and down, it's about a quarter mile strip that they use to race. We have the bars, the people after, we have the truck drivers and the prostitutes out there behind us, and it just goes on and on and on. We have overgrown areas of weeds and grass that the Bank of America refuses to mow, and then it just, whatever comes from the storms, it just piles up. The city came in, they removed two sections of my fence, so everything that blows from that side of the fence blows into my yard. As I said, I'm disabled, I don't want to be out there cleaning up whatever blows over. My biggest concern is that because it's, the homeless people are there, they carry HIV virus, tuberculosis, and hepatitis C, and I don't know what they've touched that's been in my yard, but I, I mean, every day I'm out there cleaning out my yard, I have flower beds, they throw everything over in the flower beds. I've even asked them not to stay in that area, and for an example, one girl came in and she said, I'm taking care of my baby, it was a cat, and she had put Pampers on the cat. So mentally, we're dealing with people that are not stable back there, and we, the police have even come and tried to enforce to remove them, and they don't leave. So I'm asking again for the city to be involved in this area, to, to probably find the people, the owners, the landowners of these, of this fence, and we have Walgreens on the other side with the issue of the water, and there is stuff falling over on people's and there is stuff falling over on people's properties, and nothing has been done to help us seniors. We paid our dues, now it's time for someone to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Claudia Buchanan.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Claudia Buchanan, and I also live on China Berry Circle East. I'm at forty-three-oh-seven China Berry Circle. My house is in the very back corner of that circle, that cul-de-sac. And a lot of the pictures that Mary Ann showed you are the, is the fencing behind my house. I have the unique up, I don't know if it's, it's not an opportunity. I have the unique disadvantage of having the fencing owned by two different property owners. The fencing on the north end of the property is owned by Bank of America. And then when you make the corner, the fencing on the east side is owned by Venders and Corporation. When that fence was put in thirty, forty years ago, it was probably up to code for the timeframe that it was put in. Since then, the development had, the shopping, the commercial district has grown exponentially. The volume of people that come in through, in that, in that area has grown exponentially.
Excuse me, ma'am, please, sir, there's the lady talking, if you could be quiet, please. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. There's, there's bars, there's restaurants, there's, there's, there's a lot of activity going on directly behind my property. The cars that were in those pictures are cars that are parked by the employees of Gecko's, Tractor Supply, and so on, that are parked illegally. When those people come out to their cars at the end of the night, at eleven-thirty at night, they crank up their, their car stereos, they're shouting profanities at each other jokingly, you know, F this, and so on. I moved into a fifty-five-plus community because I'm sixty-three years old, and I wanted to have a place where I could feel safe, have peace of mind, and, and retire comfortably. And I don't feel safe there. There's, I have a picture, I, I have a letter representing a couple of other people in my neighborhood as well. So I've given the clerk a letter from each of us. I also have included a couple of pictures, one of which is of your city workers who had to get access to a manhole sewer cover in my backyard. And they literally took a section of that fence and just lifted it up, and set it off to the side, and ran their hoses and, and materials through the back from the Gecko's side. And when they were done, they simply picked it up and set it back in place. There's pictures of that as well. My, I'm here today to see if there's any way that we can bring that fence up to code to be a proper barrier between a commercial and a residential property. I know that you're not gonna be able to get rid of all the noise and all the people, but if we could have a buffer, a sound buffer, I would feel safer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wiley Green.
Morning.
Good morning again. I know some of you are wondering about this water situation. But just to make you be aware that we need to really think things through, with me having twenty-eight plus years with the city of Brighton. I want you guys to really think about what you're doing and decisions you're making because sometimes it can look like one thing and it's another. I remember when the water situation came up before, about the wastewater treatment plant, and we had some individuals that ran leadership saying that the water's so safe they could drink it. And we don't wanna get bamboozled again. But that's why I brought the water up, so to make sure you guys make aware, or very aware, what's going on from some of our leadership. I wanted to talk about this land agreement with the city of Brighton, and from some of the churches in Ward Five. It seems as though that we can't seem to buy the land. It was one time that a lot of these churches that do have these land agreements, they were all owned by minorities. And now it seems as though that they can't buy it and move on for the church growth, for various reasons, I can't understand why. And I don't want that dilemma to happen to some of these other churches, St. Paul, Gassamity, and our church itself is going through this, and maybe, maybe some more. And they've been trying and had the money and still couldn't get the deal done. So just wanted to bring this to council. We don't wanna go back to the way things were when I came here in the sixties, but we want this city to continue to be a friendly one, and where everybody, and I heard the mayor and a lot of you stating, and I believe that what he said, that it should be for everyone. And I thank you all for all your support and all the things that you have done. Hopefully, you guys will get some done, things done, and you ladies are making history. So make sure that you make the right history. Thank you.
Don't forget your water.
All right.
Thank you. We have Keith Green. Good morning, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Keith Green, eleven-oh-eight Sixtieth Avenue West. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to come up again to give, let you guys know we are one week, less than one week away from the upcoming first responders' mass that will be at St. Joseph's Catholic Church. And also will be hosted by the Knights of Columbus Council there, of St. Joseph's Council. It will be on Friday, May nineteenth, at eleven-thirty a.m. And it's just one of our ways of definitely giving back to our men and women who serve our country, both in the police department, fire, EMS, medical, retired, and active military. And I wanted to, again, thank all of you for, you know, definitely being supportive of this event. And I look forward to seeing most of you there on May nineteenth. And, you know, as it's been stated before, you know, this is, you know, with all the, you know, bad press that's been given to law enforcement, this is just our way to say, you know, thank you for what they do. Because at the end of the day, all they wanna really do is just do their jobs and go home, and just have appreciation from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards, so Mr. Perry.
Mayor.
Can you pull the microphone?
Thanks, sir. There's a couple of things I just wanna touch base on a little bit. First, the China Berry Circle issued down at River Isles. There's a, the, the two speakers that came forward, they have very legitimate concerns, in my opinion. I've been to that area personally myself. I've walked back into where the fence line is, of the Walgreens, and the like. There's a multitude of issues. I'm going to ask my staff, Shelley, to basically put it on to our Monday morning new business as it relates to code, code enforcement's responsibility, building safety and the like, to look at the quality of that fence. We, they have taken action in some cases, and it's been ignored to a certain extent by the Walgreens ownership group, from what I understand. But I think we'll have to step it up to the next level in order to, to try to get some direct action and attention to remedy some of the situations. Obviously, it's adjacent, adjacent to a pretty busy commercial center that has those various components of the, that mall area, and it does have late-night traffic. I can't do too much about that, and I think, I think Claudia recognized that as well. Obviously, as it relates to the homelessness component, homeless encampment, overnight camping, is a citywide, nationwide issue. Many, many factors, obviously, that contribute to that. Mental health, substance abuse, financial situation, on and on. But we are working with the county and the city. And I have reached out to one of my former associates that is pretty much the number-two person at the legal department of St. Petersburg, to ask them how they handled it. They've had quite a bit of success with some legislation that was put into place. Really, when you look at legislation, there's two types. One that will deal with the, the panhandling, particularly on public rights away that we see, and it becomes a public safety issue, traffic safety, a whole host of issues associated with that. The other one is the encampment. There's some fairly tedious Supreme Court law that comes out as it relates to fundamental rights under the First Amendment that allows people to, I guess, camp, sleep. Generally speaking, what the law is, is that they don't, homeless people don't have a right to sleep anywhere, but they have a right to sleep somewhere. And so what ends up happening is a lot of governments produce emergency shelters. And those emergency shelters allow, basically, the police to enforce because you have a bed available at an emergency shelter. We are looking at that with the county in combination because the entirety of the area, the county, the city, needs to be clean, you know, at some level, this addressed, it will not eliminate it in its entirety, but it could minimize it a little significantly. St. Pete has had pretty good luck with that, according to Mr. Patner. I've had numerous conversations with him. He was the person responsible back in two thousand and eleven through two thousand and twelve for drafting those ordinances. He defended them three times against the ACLU, and won each time. I think he's a pretty good subject matter expert on that in Florida. So we intend to, to look at this encampment thing, but it's not an easy situation. This property back there, I don't know if it's private, if it's related to River Isles, if it's on the other side of the fence line, the like. There are some things that obviously deal with the criminal trespass aspect and the advisement there, and the ability to move people along. That's more of a police enforcement matter. And so I guess we can get together with Chief Bevan and see what can be done at a certain level, if there is anything, to ratchet that up a little bit. But I do think it's a problem area. And unfortunately, soon as you run it out of one area and correct that, it moves to another area. That's just the intent, you know, it's an itinerant problem, it continuously moves.
Well, I think, obviously, my, going through, it's the first time I've seen exactly all of this, but was about who owns the fence. Because I think that fence probably doesn't meet the standard as when it was put in. And, but that would be something to start the fence line, and then obviously, who's responsible, whose property is it to maintain? Then, as you maintain it, you know, and then another thing that, that was talked about was the loud music at night. I would guess that, that plaza's been there a long time, probably before you both moved in there. So sometimes you knew moving in, what you were moving by, but that doesn't give them the right to have loud music when they leave and all that. So that may be a good neighborly thing to talk to the manager, and who, how do we do that of those businesses, to say, "Hey, can you remind your employees that there's houses right behind here? So wait till you get on Manatee Avenue and wake up everybody on there instead of, you know, in the neighborhood." So, so that would be, you know, I mean, there's always some solutions you can work through, but, and try to do it in the neighborly way, but, but, you know, I always put it to, it's like moving by an airport and saying, "The airport needs to move." You know, we gotta work together when you move in a, a urban-type city that's got businesses around homes. But it's, I agree with you on noise because live by the, the Green Bridge and hear the cars going over it at night, you know, and, because they, they go fast, and that's an issue that we gotta deal with, too, and try to get people not to go so fast with loud mufflers, so.
May I speak to it?
Yes, Ms. Moore.
I, I have Ms. Lydeem's contact information, and I'll follow up as well. And I'm not sure if it's my turn, Mr. Perry, to attend your Monday morning, but maybe this would be a good one for me to jump into so that I can participate in that conversation, so that I can keep Ms. Lydeem and her neighbors apprised of progress. This is a situation that code enforcement is aware of. And it's always unfortunate when it's a commercial property owner that's not really doing what they're supposed to be doing. But I do know that there has been some effort in that regard, but we can certainly do whatever we can to move it along and, and continue to push to have it rectified. And again, I, I can only echo the sentiments on the homelessness. You know, when you have the, the green, that's usually appealing. We have tried to do some things in that area to lessen the appeal of that particular area by moving the advertisement boxes and the clothing donation box. But I appreciate that it is still a problematic area, I think because of that, the nature of that cover. But I would like to be more involved in that conversation, if you don't mind, and then I can keep you all informed and updated.
Great, thanks. We'll keep you in the, keep you in the loop on that, council, for sure. Yep. I, I wanted to touch on, on Mr. Green's comments regarding his church and the adjacent property to it. About a year ago, so ago, Mr. Green and I had the opportunity to go out there on a Friday morning and spend an hour together and hear about Mr. Green's work when he was with the city for his career. And he's an interesting and good guy and everything. We looked at the property as well. Mr. Green had, had, had expressed an interest on obtaining a piece of that adjacent property for parking for his church, which he has been maintaining and the like. As I investigated it and worked further with Mr. McClellan, it was a possibility. However, they had a drainage project, I think a flood control type, type, type project in the area. And we weren't sure that that piece that Mr. Green wanted was, was necessary for that project. And so it was dependent on a study and engineering and that type of thing. The study was completed, it was determined that we could sacrifice that particular piece of property that was, that was desired, that's adjacent right next to the church, not the totality of the lot itself, and, and the acreage that's assembled there for the project. So that was a good news. It took time. Wiley's been working on this for a while. It's not the first time probably any of you have heard about this, or most of you, and the like. But we're at a position now where what we have to do is probably take a look at it and see if we have to get an appraisal, and then whether we have to surplus it. If, I don't know if it's in a CRA, it could, it could possibly, I don't think it is.
Brighton CRA.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about. It's Fifteenth Ave., isn't it? I seem to remember. Yeah, yeah, and so Chris is kind of nodding his head that it's, so by law, if we were to basically dispose of property that's in a CRA, it will have to be publicly noticed. I don't know if that's a bidding war, particularly if we, but then you've got the division, the, the, the issue with having to do a replat, you know, the, the, the property division itself has to be subdivided and then replatted. Because right now, the acreage on the plat is the totality of the parcel and everything. And so with a very specific type of, of subdivision, subdivided piece of property, I can't imagine a lot of people are gonna want it because the only purpose is for adjacent landowner for parking. It probably might not accommodate residents and the like. If that's the case, you know, I think it'll be, probably, the value will not be at the market value of a developable property for, for, for residential use. So that would help Mr. Green and his endeavors. Sorry it takes so long, but, but it is a lengthy process, and it is city property, and it has to be handled appropriately. So on that one, let me close out with, with the last point regarding the former councillor, Citizen Sanders, issues. And first, let me start with the cyber hack that he's asking that the, the public be made aware of. First off, councillor Sanders was not the person that, quote, "discovered" this. Let me set that record straight. It was discovered at the department level, it was brought to people's attention on council. We had to investigate what the nature of it was. It was not a cyber hack. A cyber hack is a digital intrusion into a system. Most rudimentary understanding of, of technology would indicate that. But it's called a cyber hack? No, it's not a cyber hack. What it was is, it, it was basically an ETF scam. And the ETF scam was basically to take a vendor and change the name of the vendor, just the last, like, three, three letters, and say, "Hey, we changed our email. Can you send our payment to this new one?" And of course, it's the Bank of Nigeria. And it happened twice for twenty-six thousand dollars for a total of fifty-two thousand dollars. It is currently continuously under criminal investigation. I've talked, I talk with the chief occasionally, every couple of months, where we at. And I believe that our investigators are working with some other investigators that deal with these types of things because it does cross boundaries and lines and things like that. And when they're ready and, and complete the investigation, we'll know a little bit more about whether there's a viable suspect and whether there's any potential of, of recovery or criminal charges. So that's issue number one. Issue number two that was mischaracterized is the fact that we're up to eighty-three million dollars. The issue, the, the, the legislation before us today is not to borrow thirty-five million dollars, it's a reimbursement resolution. What it means, basically, is that if we were to spend money today to design, engineer, develop, build, borrow against, for our water system, and when we talk about the water system, three components, sanitary sewer, collection, water- and when we talk about the water system, three components, sanitary sewer, collection, water treatment at the plant. Third, injection technology, what do you do with the water after it's treated? So when, what it is is if we do anything on those things, we can be reimbursed from the SRF funds that we'd have to borrow. The good news is we, that, that forty-eight million is a large number. What it would take to build a system for tomorrow. Jones Ed- Edmunds Engineering did a full systems analysis. There's a lengthy report about those three components and what the city needs to do in the long term to meet our future growth needs. And those are the three areas, up to forty-eight million, up to. We received significant funding this year from the state legislature. And I'd like to thank you all for who, folks that went up there and were engaged, lobbyists and the like, to deal with our water system issues. Uh, we'll continue to do that. So it could be up to that amount, but it'll be phased. I'm a little bit hard pressed to hear an individual come up to that podium and basically say, I'm glad that you were sued by water keepers and you need to do something to fix that system. And I was the one that brought it to your attention and I'm the one rooting for it. At the same time, speak out the, the other side of his mouth and say, you shouldn't fix it. You shouldn't borrow the money. Which one is it? Can't have it both ways. That's what we're trying to do is fix this system. It has to be fixed. When it is fixed, it'll, it'll, a long-term fix that will bring us to where we need to be with water utility challenges. So that's, that, on that issue.
Mr. Perry, before you go to anything else, um, and where does that money come from as we need to borrow it? And the forty-eight million actually will be less as we get more state grants and legislative help. So in reality, the loan, and it was explained very well to all of us up here in a public meeting that we need, if that is the total amount, that's what it is. But we will only borrow as we do and it'll be decreased as we get state and help.
That is absolutely correct as far as the, the, uh, uh, additional funding options. Where the money comes from? We run a, we run a business here at the city called, called the Water Utility. And, uh, that business basically brings in about thirty million dollars a year. It has operating cost, it has capital cost to operate it and, and to buy the machinery, the engineering, the, the, the components of the system. The money comes from the rate. At the end of the day, we have to allocate what we get to pay our bills for our staff, our supplies, our materials. That's called operating cost, if you went to business school and understand things about finance. And then the other piece is we have to buy equipment to produce that water, to treat that water, to be able to transmit and deliver that water. That's the business we're in. We're in the water business. There's a reason why that is on the monopoly board as waterworks. Because it's a good business, it's a necessary business. We're the only people that can do that business. And we will continue to do that business, compete, continue to meet our needs with your all's support. Jim and his staff over there do a very good job. We're in good finance, very good financial condition. And SRF, as far as the, the lending, that's what they do. They lend for these types of projects. And so I'm looking forward to rebuilding that system over the next several years. And I think we have a good team to do that and a good plan.
All right, and then there was another mischaracterization of the reserve fund and ARPA and all of that that, that if, if you've been around here and you're studying it, you know that the facts don't match the, the, uh, comments today.
No, and, and specifically when fifty-eight million was referred to, um, that fifty-eight million dollars is, uh, has been created in a variety of ways. One way it was not created that was stated today that is absolutely incorrect is through ARPA. That fifty-eight million does not include our eleven million dollar, um, federal appropriation that was for ARPA. Um, so I guess just didn't have the facts right and, and, and the like. Um, some of the fifty-eight million did come from like the Everest Reservoir, uh, the allocation of, of that amount. But, uh, that's incorrect. And then lastly, uh, the air handlers. Um, I, if I spoke about a million and a half dollars at any time, um, I was referring to the overall systems improvement. I think we have twenty-six air handlers on top of this building. And every time one of them goes out, it's about a hundred grand and, and to replace it. And we've replaced a lot of them. Um, and, and probably will need to continue if we stayed at this building. Because what it does, it points out the need to, um, re- replace and repair aging mechanical, um, equipment on a building. And, and that's all that's about.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore?
Um, I, I was going to actually pull, um, sixty.
Wait, wait.
Well, I, I'm only, right, no, no, as to citizen comment, to follow in his, um, comments. Because I think that it is, uh, it could potentially be confusing to the general public and I think that it's important to clarify. I don't want there to be confusion about what that actually is.
All right, so, um, finishing.
On that point, I believe Mr., um, Mr. Williams went and, and tried to meet with each councillor to explain to them the resolution. Um, don't know if you had a chance to meet and have him confirm with, uh, uh, councillor Gonzalez.
All right, so moving on from citizen comment now and, and comments from the dyes, uh, we're getting to consent agenda. So is there a motion for consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I move to, uh, adopt the consent agenda, A through C and A, six, I'm sorry, six A through C and six E through six M.
Okay, so we're pulling D.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Correct.
We would also ask to pull, um, from the agenda completely, item F on the consent agenda. That is not ready for approval today.
So we're going to pull F to be discussed later, so it's not gonna be voted on today.
Correct.
Okay, so F will be pulled for future, future discussion. And then the rest of consent agenda is being voted on, or a, a motion to approve by council, Moore, minus D.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, all right. And then for, um, that motion, we'll start in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Okay, it's approved, councilwoman Moore for D.
I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Williams and it was very helpful. And so I thought for the benefit of everyone, I would just clarify that this resolution does not actually resolve or approve any current proposed borrowing. It is a mechanism for us to recoup funds for capital improvement projects in the future, if we chose to do that in the future. But it does not do it today and it is wholly unrelated to our resolution to borrow up to forty-eight million for potential public work projects. Again, up to forty-eight million, not that we actually have borrowed forty-eight million. So I thought that was an important point to let everyone know.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, Mayor, I think it is an important point.
Yes.
I appreciate you clarifying that to make clear a record at this point, for sure.
Okay, Mrs. Coachman?
Yes, um, Mr. Perry, you pretty much, uh, took what I was thinking to say, no, 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 that's okay, that's okay. I'm just gonna be a little redundant. Um, on the positive side of the citizen that brought that up in comments, it does allow us to explain it and in some instances, repeat explanation. And being in education, sometimes, you know, the more you say it, the more it sticks. So I appreciate you pulling that so that the public will hear what we understood in our briefings. And I also, uh, appreciate that the citizen brought up what he did because that then allowed us again to clarify for the public. So again, repeat it, sticks.
As well as getting the true facts, so, yep. So Mrs. Moore, do you have a motion?
I move to.
Approve D.
Approve, yes, I'm sorry, I wanted to say adopt. Approve consent agenda, item six D.
Okay, second by Ms. Coachman, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Harry's five to zero, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted, uh, could we, um, rather than pull, keep pulling things off the consent agenda, couldn't we, when we make our motion and second it, then we should have discussion? And couldn't we be bringing those comments? When it's just to make sure that, rather than, I mean, it just seems like it'd be more streamlined if we did it that way rather than, um, and if the discussion ended up making, you could always move to amend.
Oh, it's like there's another gavel.
Oh, yeah, on CRA days.
Yeah, that's a good, good point.
Just, I, I, I'm just throwing it out there, so.
You could have discussion about an item and then it kind of clean or something.
And maybe there'd be more things.
Right.
That you'd wanna discuss that you didn't really wanna pull off and.
Right.
Just a thought.
Nope, good idea. All right, um, so on F, Mr. Rudesel, that'll just come back at a later date.
Yeah, just to give a little background on that, this is the, an amendment to an existing telecommunications lease on one of the city water towers. And based on some recent, uh, issues that we've had, we've, we've realized that we need to create some more flexibility for the city as it relates to those tower agreements, and so we're trying to build that into the amendment.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to speak during the following public hearing, will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-three forty-six, and this is a public hearing. A resolution of the City Council for the City of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU point two-three point zero-nine zero-eight to construct a private residential dock, dock up to one hundred fifty feet long in the T-three zoning district at eighteen thirty-four Riverside Drive East, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Good morning, council, my name is Rachel Arsenal. I'm with the Planning and Community Development Department and I have been sworn in.
Morning.
Today, my presentation is on special use twenty-three dot zero-nine zero-eight and it is located at eighteen thirty-four Riverside Drive East. This special use permit is requested to construct a private dock into the Manatee River that exceeds eighty feet in length. This is the subject property. It currently has a single-family home and a thirty-foot dock into the Manatee River. The property is located in the T-three suburban zoning district and it is a future use of residential low density. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a hundred and fifty-foot long dock and seven hundred and twenty square feet in area. Uh, the purpose is to get to extended length for more navigable waters, which is becoming more of a common special use. This is the subject property, um, showing the potential of a hundred and fifty-foot length and how that compares to neighboring properties. This is our seagrass map to show what, um, area of seagrass would be affected by that extended length. This is the bathmetry map to show the depth of water in that area and show the point of reaching that more, uh, deep and navigable water. Special use criteria for residential docks goes to Land Use Regulations, Chapter three point three point three point one. Um, there are five criteria that we look at when assessing these. Um, the first being that the dock will not be attached to the seawall that is located within the right of way. The second is that the setbacks are designed to exceed the minimum required, which is ten feet. The third is that the signed grant of easement is not required. The city attorney found it not necessary since it is property owned by the property owner on the other side of the right of way. The fourth is that there is a compatible dock next door. It underwent the special use process in twenty-twenty to approve a hundred and sixty-foot dock. Other docks in a two-block diameter range in length from fifty-eight feet to a hundred and two feet. The final one is not applicable to this permit. Staff finds that the applicant has met all requirements for the special use permit and recommends approval of SU dot twenty-three dot zero-nine zero-eight with the following stipulations. That the dock shall be kept in good and working order, lighting will be in accordance with FDEP requirements, and that other state or, uh, federal permits that are applicable will be obtained before commencement. The Planning Commission met in public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of SU dot twenty-three zero-nine zero-eight with the staff recommended stipulations. Um, staff recommended stipulations have been altered since Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the stipulation of a signed grant of easement has been removed after discussions with the city attorney. All other stipulations have remained unchanged. And that is everything. If you have any questions, feel free.
Questions? Okay, so do we have the applicant? Wanna give a update, comments?
I'm, uh, Tom Glancy with Duncan Seawall, five oh five Kent Hubbard Road up in Terracee. Um, I don't really have anything else to say. You've done a great job of presenting everything. I'm just here in case you have any specific questions about any of the permitting or any, anything along those lines with DEP or Army Corps, so. Anybody have anything?
The only thing that I saw, and I don't know if we can pull up the map of the built dock, um, and the, the navigable waters.
Sure.
Right there.
Come on.
So that now sticks out in an area that boats are gonna be going. Do they, is that, and, you know, and again, I just think of somebody coming around there and if it's at night, is there any additional safety precautions?
Uh, yeah, DEP will usually require us to put some, some reflectors on, on docks that are out there, like, you know, every, every fifty feet, especially out on the terminal out there.
Yeah, because just the way that transgresses into it, you know, I would hope that we would have something the way that curves there, because boats are gonna be towards the, probably more towards the shore. And then all of a sudden, that's there where the other one, they have to go around a curve to, to possibly have.
And that's, that's kind of like the nearshore, sort of the nearshore channel. Obviously, it's not a very big open part of the river, so your main, your main boat traffic's gonna be, you know, high-speed boat traffic's gonna be out of the channel out there. This is not necessarily the channel.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I just have had some experience in my other business, unfortunately, where the docks have been hit and, yeah, so especially in Jacksonville. They were a lot worse and they weren't lit, so. I just, you know, just for, you know, so it is reflectors, different things at night and.
Yeah, we'll make sure to have that on it.
Yeah, all right, so, no, that, that was the only thing, no, not a criticism, just a comment.
Understood completely.
All right, any other questions or we'll go to public comment?
Yeah, I have a quick question on curiosity, just looking at that.
Pull the microphone, please.
Just looking at that overhead. So I, I noticed that it looks like that, that darker area is the deeper part of the channel and you wanna reach it, the owner wants to reach it, which makes sense and the like. But the majority, if you go back to that, Ms. Arsenal? Oh, you're trying to, let's go back to that and then if you wanna show me something else. But, but I noticed that the majority of those docks all along, um, the, 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 the river are in the shallow part of the channel, if you look at that, right? So, so how do they get their boat out there to the deeper part?
They're in tough shape, a lot of them have to really fight the tides. A lot of that has accrued over the years, you know.
Sure.
Shifting sand, so they build them there when there's decent water and then, um, you know, a lot of times that stuff changes. But, uh, yeah, there's a lot of people who are slave to the tides.
Yeah.
Maybe you got a, an hour window before high tide and an hour after.
I have a friend that's in that situation, yeah, with his boat, I, I understand what you're saying. Do they dredge that at all?
You know, there's just, there's, there's no money for that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
You can, private, private owners can, can get a, uh, can apply to DEP for a maintenance dredge permit. Uh, if it's been previously dredged and they can show that, then that's a fairly simple process. But if it's a new dredge, that can be a, a very lengthy, couple-year-long process to do. Uh, and it's, dredging is very expensive, so.
Just curious questions.
If you can avoid that at the beginning, and that's what DEP wants people to do, uh, uh, is really to, you know, spend that little bit extra money to get out to there so you're not constantly dredging these areas up, you know, seagrass tries to grow in there and then you're coming in and trying to dredge them. You know, in the long run, it's a, it's a better deal just to get out where you can get some, some water.
Right, and just one other question, degradation of seagrass? I mean, with our problems with Manatee and food source and all that, any comments on the condition of the seagrass in that area or what this could either help or hurt seagrass?
Well, I mean, obviously, this is, this is designed with. Well, I mean, obviously, this is, this is designed with the four-foot width, and it's, um, and the way that they're elevated in north-south orientation, they let a lot of light underneath. But, uh, the grass in all those areas up there is really pretty spotty. You're getting into a fairly, um, freshwater environment when the more you get up there. So I know it showed some grass on your, on your map there. Um, those are probably very, very sparse up in there.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, we'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm missing the motion. I move to pass. I'm sorry, I don't have it up.
It's Resolution twenty-three forty-six.
Yes, I move to pass Resolution twenty-three forty-six with, I, it includes staff's stipulations.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. So is any other further comment?
I just want to say, uh, from Mr. Perry's observation, we'll probably be getting a lot more applications for extending those, those docks in the future.
Thank you. All right, hearing no more, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you.
Mayor, just want to thank Ms. Arsenal for that excellent presentation. She is one of our newest people to join our department. She's high-energy, does a great job, had come to us from the land of ten thousand lakes, isn't that what Minnesota is?
It is.
University. Okay, okay, so she's familiar with waterways and things like that.
Welcome, thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is architectural standards, visual presentation by Mr. Perry.
Mayor, Council. Um, I, I wanted to start a discussion about the architectural standards for the, uh, the city's mixed-use project. I had met with the working group team from both the city and, uh, the, 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 uh, proposed developer at this particular point in time, L and L Development. And Mr. Jim Zorbal, you remember, he'd come in, given presentations, basically, and, uh, information regarding their proposal, which was ranked as number one. In the first meeting, he had asked that I just begin a discussion regarding the architectural standards, because we had continuously heard that, uh, we want something that will be the Bradenton look, that will fit in, that will complement, that will enhance, and otherwise be a great world-class project, and, and that's what we want. And so, um, in doing, and, and one of the, 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 the reasons why is that Mr. Zorbal had said, it's important that we get kind of a, um, direction on this so that we can then go to the next steps with our architects as it relates to design. Obviously, the standard itself, the fascias, the front of the building, the other components of the building, and the building massing on the site. Um, and, and I, I would have thought that, that things like the fascia would, could be kind of modified later, but I guess in the architectural critical path, they need to be established early on. So I sent out a, uh, an email to councilors and asked for their input in trying to kind of gather some graphics, photographs, images and the like, and I appreciate, um, the, the people providing those to me. I've included them in this package of architectural standards, and I also spent several, several hours looking at mixed-use projects, um, around the country. And I included images in there that I thought were kind of what I was get, getting information from council from, uh, what they might like down here, what has worked in other places, and meets kind of program needs, and the, the purposes of this facility, and the various, uh, mixes of use. And so I included them in there as well, and I appreciate y'all giving me your, your input to that. Ultimately, um, in our last meeting, Mr. Zorbal said, we do this for a living. We know it's hard to get five, nine, hundred people on the same page regarding, you know, works of art, architectural standards, but we're good at it, and, and, and I think one of the best approaches that we use, Mr. Perry, is to go to your council individually and try to get their feelings. And I think that's probably, um, a good idea for sure. So we'll be doing that in the future. But I did want to just basically provocatively bring to your attention some of the things that we were looking at as it relates to meeting, um, what we were hoping to be, um, a world-class project, and what's proven to be world-class projects in other, other locations. And so with the package, if we could just go through a couple of them real quick, I'll, I'll give just some comments. I'm just, um, throwing food for thought, not asking for any particular action. If we could go to the next one. This one in, in Nashville downtown at the Public Market was generally well-liked by most people I had showed it to on council and otherwise. Um, it, it, what's interesting about it, it's multi-level, and, uh, it, it has a lot of cantilever shaded space, open space underneath it. It does show some green space within it as far as vegetation, um, accents and the like. And I think it's important to note that if you look at building orientation and capitalizing on the orientation that faces the river, um, it's probably the better part of the four-acre site. As, when I say better part, probably the most, uh, scenic and, and beautified part, because you have, um, the Riverwalk, the Marina, and the river, obviously, um, next to it. And along that area, you know, you're gonna, I think Mr. Zorbal had talked about having both the hotel tower and the, uh, condo tower. And that would be a high-rise type structure that would sit above what your streetscape would be. Another point that was discussed, I think Mr. Allen brought this up, and it's, it's a very valid point. He said, when you're in these types of places, generally from an architectural perspective and a perception perspective, you tend to focus on what's around you at this level, opposed to looking up, um, right away. But if you're coming over the Green Bridge and you're looking down at Bradenton, you might see a skyline more prominently than you would if you were on the streetscape, so to speak. This does a good job of showing kind of a mixed use, because it shows two towers. One, you can't see too high in the upper right-hand portion, but the other one, uh, behind it, in the center, uh, upper portion of it. And it's interesting, because when you look at this image, you don't really look at that tower until you look at the streetscape. And, you know, it's also important to think about, well, what would it look like from the Green Bridge or other types of, um, vantage points, uh, to, to people that, that are looking at this? And my thought is that when you come down there, you want to see Bradenton, downtown Bradenton, and, and, and that type of, uh, signage or, or, or neon or whatever it is. I don't know, that, that's LED, I'm sure, as far as the light at Nashville Public Market space, but, you know, those are features like that we could incorporate in here to really put the project on a high level of prominence from a visual appearance perspective. So just some food for thought on that. Moving forward, next one, uh, obviously more traditional cathedral-type of archway, brick look, really nice, really clean. Watchtower, yes, no, maybe, maybe so, whatever. Third one, more modern, streetscape, long wharf. I think this area is in, uh, I, I think it's in Southern California. I'm not sure where, but for some reason, I remember saying that this had come out of Southern California. But very activated space, uh, different services, bring people there for food, beverage, entertainment, and the like. Uh, above it, if you see in that space, there is a, there is a small, um, the tower, again, terraced shading and the like. Keep going. Here, streetscape. What I liked about this is it has the pay, the, the brick pavers out front. Our Baccarat has a lot of brick going through it. It's a beautiful roadway, um, kind of traditional tree lines, the like. If we could keep going, next one. Um, nice green space in the middle, public space, um, up top, upper right-hand side, looks like a ballroom-type configuration or a restaurant of some sort that sits over the top. Lot of glass, more contemporary and modern. Next one. Uh, it, this is interesting, and, and I think what I was trying to show in this one is that at some level, value engineering comes into play. And some people look at value engineering, they go, where was the glass that was in the rendering? Where are the, the balconies? Well, we had to value engineer it out. They're costly, those types of things that I'd showed you. Um, the trellises, the cantilevers, the, 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 the beautification, the lighting and the like. This is more traditional, um, I think it's a six-story building, and this is probably more economic to build because of the facades. And so price will be factored into it as well. And when we look at this project, I think we have to look at it in the multitude of, of, of three sides. Probably four totally, but three that are very visual. What I mean by that is the prime side being Baccarat and the waterfront, the main street side being side two, and then the tenth street side that faces the bishop being side three. When, the backside would, of course, back up to our garage that's currently existing, and they'll have to configure out, can configure ways to, to address that, what it looks like, how it functions, its programmatic purpose, the like. Um, but, but it is important to think about the building, it's not going to be one monolithic type of look. If you look at the, the hotel, the Spring Hill Suites, it's a monolithic look, the entire building looks the same. If you look at our parking garage, it's a, I wouldn't say that's monolithic at all, but, but, but it's all kind of deco in a different way, right? And everything. That's the point I'm trying to make. Now we go more to, to, to this particular photograph. This shows some of the green features that are actually integrated into the building. Um, they're, they're certainly pretty and, 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 and nice in a lot of ways, and, and, and natural and the like. Um, the problem is, and as we go through some more of these green features, I think, the next one, I don't know why I even put this in the package, it looks like somebody's backyard. Yeah, this one here is interesting, if you like green features and modern, contemporary, really modern. It looks like the Google Alphabet soup building, right? All different colors and cuba, cubes and things like that, as far as the dimensions go. Um, when you talk about green things that are on buildings, uh, either, either vertically or, or on top of them or otherwise, um, I had a engineer pass job. He said, I'll build anything, just please don't make me put things like, that take a lot of maintenance money and cost. And the whole green attachment to buildings is a maintenance nightmare, generally, and, and a cost nightmare. Not to say that we shouldn't have some great features, and that we can figure out ways to probably maintain it better, but these types of things, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how you handle that. I've never really had a building like that. The next one is, I always, this is the county building, just on steroids. You know, it's got those columns, right? It, it's what it looked like to me, right? It's, it's a cool, cool look, it really is, and I appreciate it being included in the package and everything, but it shows you really the heavy use of green draping over. I don't know if that's ivory or whatever type of vegetation it is and the like, but, but cool in a lot of ways.
Building maintenance, doesn't like that. It looked beautiful built, but now that's a maintenance nightmare.
Yeah. Um, next one, nice tree line, a, a, and, and some nice, uh, elevated beds on this that would maybe be easier to maintain, uh, that type of thing. But still, whenever you put water at elevation, I mean, that's how they built the pyramids, right? You know, by using water as the level system and the like, water runs downhill. So when you put it at elevation, you've got to evacuate it, and sometimes it doesn't evacuate and go in the direction you want it to. It goes in the direction water goes. That's kind of what I'm referring to. Um, moving on, towers. Here's some, some, some kind of look at different types of, uh, elevations for towers. Uh, multi, not a square, but, but multifaceted, I don't know, hectagon, whatever that might be. Little combination of tower with green in this one. I don't think I'd want to be the window washer in this building. It looks tall and difficult. Yep, uh, here is a trellis look in, in the next one, with a lot of green integrated into the building. Same with the, the one after that. And then as we come into this more traditional, um, looks of buildings, you'd see these probably in some of the older cities in the United States that's trying to bring back the kind of older look, so to speak, but with modern features. As we move forward, same, same type of thing, a little bit more glass with combined brick and the like. The, the, the fall, the next photo was kind of interesting about that, when we said the Bradenton look, I kept, when I was driving around, looking at the city of Bradenton, and it was hard to find two of the same. You know, there's certainly some that have consistency, and as you come from Manatee, I have down, uh, Main Street, it, it looks a little bit like this, because there's a lot of different, um, um, brownstone-type looks that, that are different. And this photograph depicts that. Um, it's probably the closest thing to that section of Main Street that I could find. Uh, no, no two of the same, um, sections, but each one has its own place. Keep moving. Tower. Just so I wanted to give you, I think it was this one, yeah, you know, again, more, more monolithic. It's, it, it's tall, but there's two levels to it. Um, lot of glass views. I'd imagine when you build a luxury hotel and a luxury condo tower, people like looking at what they're paying for, the view. And so when they build those towers, they're going to try to maximize water view, downtown view, Bradenton view, and the like. This is, I forget how many stories it was, I was trying to get some in there that showed, because, uh, if we go to the next one. When we talked about what was originally proposed, and, and, and there's no specific about this, but generally speaking, the apartments that wrap, um, along the, the southern portion of the, of, of the site itself, both, both east and west, on the, on the Main Street side, as well as on the, um, the tenth street side. I was trying to find something that's six or seven stories, just so you could get some kind of look at what six or seven stories look like, because I think it was referenced that those sections, meeting the three hundred and fifty apartment proposal, would be, with, with center, uh, hidden wrap garage, would be in the area of seven, eight stories. And so that's where thi- this came in. And this is not a monolithic look. You know, it's, there's a little bit of difference in it and the like. It's kind of cool, because if you think about it, the downtown with what's existing already, it goes from the more traditional multifaceted brownstone look on Main Street as you come down to, um, you know, the parking lots of, of, of the Bradenton Herald and the Bamboozler establishment, to our parking lot, which is art deco, pretty cool. Everybody likes that garage that I've talked to and everything. I think you guys have done a wonderful job with, with that and everything. And, and then you're going to come into this area, and this area is going to have five different looks, this, 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 you know, six, whatever it is, or this one in the same, I don't, I don't know, whatever you all decide. But, um, this particular structure is, I think, similar to the sizing and the height of what those apartment components would be, the, 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 the multi-family components. Um, they might be one in the same, more monolithic. This has basically, you know, about two different looks at the top level and two different look, looks on the bottom, and it's fairly economical. It has roof space, as you can see, um, the terrace is up top. I'd imagine that that's something that I think in talking with Mr. Allen, when, when he had looked at doing nine-twenty and some other buildings, that that's what residents want. They don't want pools, but they kind of want kind of activity spaces. Same thing with the next one, more monolithic, but, but a little bit of, of change in the elevation. It's a corner, obviously. Uh, moving on, this is a project down in Los Angeles that is multi-level with a tower, um, actually three levels on, at the streetscape. You have the first level at, at street grade, and then as you increase the second level, it's terraced, and a third level that has a kind of pagodas on the top, and it's terraced as well. And then entirely monolithic on this one right here. All one large building, nice-looking, clean look, but, but all the same. And go on to the last one. That is LA, I thought it was the last one. They kind of speak for themselves thereafter. Um, one of the councilors had given me some, some photographs, and we pulled some more images from Arlington, um, Virginia, that's done a nice job with their mixed-use project up there. And, uh, and they're included in here as well. Just more photos, more looks, more things to think about. So that's, that's a little bit about the, the presentation on architectural standards. I do want to go to disposition of master development agreement. Um, we do have neighbors, uh, Gilpin and Nickerson, um, engaged at this point. They are very experienced in high-level, mixed-use, government types of development projects. Uh, when I say government development, I, I probably should say, uh, partnerships with government. Uh, when I say government development, I, I probably should say, uh, partnerships with government and private developers. And, um, it's interesting because one of the premier firms in Tampa that I had explored retaining early on with, with this type of experience as well, they, after they did their conflict check, said, "We have a conflict." Well, I've recently learned their conflict is they're representing L and L. They never tell you what the conflict is when they do your, their conflict check. So, we both have good lawyers, I guess is the, you know, the takeaway from that. Yep. And then lastly, the scheduled performance. I talked about that as a critical path. I'm trying to drill down on that and the complexity of it and, 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 um, the timelines associated with this type of development. It's obviously a very extended type of development. It's a staged development because there's mixed, there, there, there's multiple components to it. There's mixed-use apartments. There's a parking garage. There's a, there's a corners as it relates to higher, you know, retail, uh, entertainment, food, beverage space at, at street scale. And then buildings and towers above it. And so in order to build all that as a contractor, construction project goes, um, after you get the architecture, um, you know, it's gotta all be staged and built out kind of in sequence. And so there's, each one of those is a separate permit. Each one may have separate types of financing associated with it. That'll probably go into a master development agreement. Multiple approvals coming before the council over a, you know, two-year period plus and everything. Um, and then ultimately, um, cranes, bulldozers and things like that that build these types of projects. It's, it's exciting to me. It really is. And I have a great team that's put this together. I mean, that's who's been working behind the scenes. And I didn't know if we'd have the bandwidth and sophistication. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of it. And I think we can do a world-class project. Uh, the city team, we've got great governance and the like, but we're gonna have to stay on top of it every minute of every day. And that's about all I got to say.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Coker?
Yeah, uh, I mean, just with regard to, you know, there's a lot of different looks going on there. Um, so I think for me, the main thing was, uh, breaking up the facade and not having that monolithic building look. And, um, I like, personally, I like the stepping back and terracing, keeping that street level looking like, you know, what you had there is what our old Main Street looks like. Um, and then stepping back and tower and all that. So, um, I'm just kind of saying what I was looking for because that, that was all over the place.
Well, I think that was the purpose, not to say that one of these is gonna be it. It's just saying there's a lot of opportunity. And, you know, if there's five people in a room talking about something, there's gonna be five different opinions. So ultimately, the developer's gonna have to come up with a mixture of what they feel can be something. And then we're all gonna have to decide, okay, I like this and this, but I have to live with that because it does match some of it.
And that's why I'm voicing what I'm looking at. Because some of that to me was, um, they're great buildings. I just don't think they kind of like what we got with. But a couple of those did not look like Bradenton.
But that was not the purpose of Mr. Perry's presentation, I believe.
Okay, okay.
To say, here's what things look like. If we don't look at all of what's out there, then you really probably can't understand what some of the others are. And, and again, those aren't Bradenton, but what is Bradenton? You know, you go on, right on Manatee Avenue and you got a, a funny shaped glass building. You know, you go downtown, you've got kind of history. You go down. So, and again, this is four projects at the minimum of buildings. One side, a corner, a corner, another side, and really five, because then you have the mezzanine.
Tower, tower.
Well, I will say though, I mean, downtown by design, two hundred citizens were involved in that. And they did give you design, they had, they had a picture of the, um, Dixie, the old Dixie Grand, which, you know, I'm not saying we want to build that, but it really was kind of like the Ivy Building and all that. So, I mean, you have had a lot of citizens that did kind of say what the Bradenton look was. So.
Ms., Ms. Moore and then Ms. Coachman?
Um, I, I too, like Ms. Coker, I just thought it would be a good time for us to share our thoughts on, um, the presentation and the results of many conversations with Mr. Perry. I would like to just point out the, um, the slides that I found most appealing for your consideration. This Nashville Public Market, I, what I like about it is, um, I agree that the, the slide that had the more like our Main Street, um, our current Main Street, I think could be incorporated in something like this. What I like about this is the multi-level. I think that adds an element of, we didn't just plunk a one-time monolithic building on it. It, it, I think it gives the impression of something that evolved over time versus just a one-time project. Um, I like the use of brick and concrete so that you embrace what is our traditional downtown Main Street, but also add a little modernization. And I think the tower in the back or some form of tower could give people outside coming in from the bridge that wow factor that some are looking for. I just think it's a nice tie of both the preserving the history and also bringing in the wow factor. The other slide I'd just like to draw to everyone's attention is the one that had the greens or the public space in the middle. I love the, um, the incorporation of the public space. I think, I think everyone here pretty much knows, but I'll just say it again, that I would like to see something like that in the front on the riverside. Um, and it is my opinion that the space has to have some kind of public draw, whether it's, and these are just complete examples, not anything that I'm actually advocating for at this time, but something people can do without having to pay for it, such as a swing set or a pickleball court or corn. I don't know my yard sports very well, but you get the idea. Something that people can come to do without having to pay to do it, I think will be more of an activation of this, of the, the whole space to, to make sure that the mixed-use component is actually successful. Right, yes. Um, I feel like if you, if you build it, people will come and then they'll go to the coffee shop and the store and whatnot. Um, so I would just like to reiterate that. I really think it's super important that we pay close attention to whatever kind of public space we want to put on the riverside.
Well, I think one of the opportunities while we're there, and then we'll go to Ms. Coachman, is we're looking at something in a dead center. I think we have opportunity to be a long baccarat into the center and around differently because of our layout. So, and I think that's been something important. And as we go forward, I think we'll have opportunity to also add maybe a little bit more green space on our Main Street farther to the south, which will enhance not only the green space that we're putting here, but to do some of that activation even in closer to our south Main Street. So.
That would be great.
So, all right, Ms. Coachman?
Yes, thank you. As we were having our town halls and, and it was definitely a consensus that we wanted something, should we decide to do this? We wanted something that looked like Bradenton. But I don't think any of us could have really been able to describe that. But going through this process and looking at these different, um, concepts and buildings, it at least tells us what we don't want. You know, we know what we don't want and we know what doesn't look like Bradenton. So, uh, this is all interesting. And green space, yes. And something to bring, something to, for the public that's not a cost. You know, is, I think is vital to, for, um, to do a project like this.
And the benefit to the not the cost part is you basically tie into a three-mile trek of no cost on our Riverwalk, ending or beginning at that feature also. So I think that, that's a huge advantage for us being right on it. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when we were asked to do this and we were asked to come up with the Bradenton look, and if you drive through downtown and those of us that have been here for quite a while, there's a lot of different architectural standards or vernacular, whatever you want to call it. When I was in the meetings, what I took from it was people want this to still feel like Bradenton. And I think that's, when they're saying the Bradenton look, I think they're also saying the Bradenton feel. And does it, does it feel friendly? Does it feel something that people want to participate with? Um, we looked at pictures in, in this one that they're showing with the terraces. If you remember the original architecture of the auditorium, it was terraced. So this is just an homage to that. I think it is very important that this building, or whatever we're going to call this, this project, that we incorporate public art. And I'm encouraging public art that reflects on the river and the singing river and the water that we have in downtown. I think that is gonna be very important. I've shared several pictures with Mr. Perry. I think the public art and the public space has to have some synergy with it. And there has to be synergy with that and the Riverwalk. And when you think about Bradenton and you think about Florida, we do have a lot of plants and trees and flowering trees and, and color. And I think it's going to be important that that is incorporated in it as well because that will help with the Bradenton feel as well as, I think sometimes when you see these big tall monoliths, they look very sterile and very cold. And if we have not only public art that embraces and encourages and makes it feel like Bradenton, having as many gardening areas, for lack of a better term, landscaping, things that are going to help it again feel like Bradenton. So that's what I'm going to be looking at.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, sir. Um, one thing I appreciated of that presentation was all the slides show a lot of diverse looks. And I think if we want to try to make them that Bradenton feel, not necessarily Bradenton look, because I think one of the things, if you're driving down Main Street from Sixth Avenue all the way to here, it's a diverse look. There's all, you know, hodgepodge, I'll just say. Um, I think any of these that we looked at, maybe not the Google one, maybe not the one with the Chinese writing on the wall. Um, but any of them, I think, could be adapted to have that Bradenton feel. And that's, uh, encouraging. Again, should we go in that direction and move forward with that? We always have to put that caveat out there because a lot of people think that this is, this is de facto us saying, oh, we're gonna choose one of these. And that's, we're not there yet. I just need everybody to understand that. Uh, but this is obviously a step in the, in the process that if we are, we have to have everything out there in the open, you know, and we are able to discuss them here amongst ourselves.
Thank you. And, and I don't know how many of us have at times been to Savannah and on the Riverwalk of Savannah. Um, if you went there years ago, you know, you of course see all of the hundreds, two-hundred-year-old buildings that are kind of on the river and in the way it goes. And they've tried over the years to, I think, incorporate some of that history in Savannah. And I think their latest project, which I went there about a year ago, was in a district where it was more of a warehouse district. And they actually, from the look, when I got there, I'm like, this looks familiar. And then, you know, I'm not very familiar with it all, but looks familiar. But then when you go inside the new warehouse district, they basically tore it all down and rebuilt it very similar to what the warehouses looked like with the red brick and all of that, but was able to modernize it to continue their kind of look of Savannah on the river. But then you still go a little bit farther, I don't know if it's north or south, whatever way it was, to the other end. And you still had the two-hundred-year-old buildings that were two-hundred-year-old looking. So, you know, and then we were hoping, people are saying, well, we don't know if we can save them or we try to rebuild them as is, you know, or the look. So, um, Savannah, I was impressed with the way they tried to save the look of the culture, but had to redo. So, and I think we have some of that opportunity to really, you know, redo, but save the look of our culture and, and the heritage of Bradenton, um, whatever that may be at the moment. So. But nope, thank you, Mr. Perry. And I think it's, it's very important, as we've done all along and we give other talks and me more probably the most, um, at different events. But to really, to, to say that this has been a collaborative and we have gone out and we have asked for input from the citizens. We have worked within the business world and the, the realtors and all of that to go forward. And I'm gonna give a shout out to an individual in the audience because at that moment, I was the only one on the board. But Mr. Callahan did a great job as far as the parking garage because we didn't want it to make it look like a parking garage. We wanted to, to engage and we were fortunate enough at the right time to work with the chamber to keep them here because that was very important to all of us on the, at the council at that time as well as Mr. Callahan. And, uh, so, you know, the look, and, and again, if you ask my dad, he still looks for the parking garage. Well, that was the whole purpose, to be able to not make it look like a parking garage. And I think we, at one point, had done that enough to where people couldn't find it. So now we've got some signs. Mr. Callahan, I'd like to, you know, just the look of that, you know, if you have anything you'd wanna say.
Thank you, Carl Callahan, one fourteen twenty-fifth Street West. And I think from that perspective, it's very important to look at that garage. And, and y'all weren't here. Um, you maybe heard some of the thoughts on it. But the whole thought was, how do we design a garage? Well, it doesn't look like a garage, but that was not the whole purpose. The whole purpose was an iconic building. And if you look at two different things were going on, the museum was undergoing their redo, a complete redo. The look of the museum is completely different than the look of the rest of downtown, or a lot different. So when we took that garage into account, we said, okay, we want this side to look like Main Street. So you see, I call the New Orleans look, you know, the upstairs balconies, the roll-top doors is a modern feature, but still looks like what is Main Street. The chamber side is completely different. It's a modern, it's a more modern look. You have that very same opportunity as you have a condo. You have an apartment complex. You have a hotel. Of doing very similar things as you look forward to this project. Not one, hey, in one building we took. And then there was the piece we called the yellow stuff. That was the transition. That was just the transition between one side that looked one way and a transition to the other side that looked completely different. So that was a whole thought process. We love Folly Bryant for using their imagination, which is really what it's all about. It's not our imagination. I mean, our, those people who think with that side of the brain, whichever one it is, are really creative. So kind of, when we go about this process, think about what you like. Tell them what you like and then let them use their imagination to create that for you. You trying to do it, me trying to do it, just wasn't gonna work. I never would've come close to designing that. You know, so, so think in those terms as you move forward. I think it's a fantastic opportunity to get what you want and for the developer to get what they want. Is a, they want an iconic project.
I think one of the things in the garage, if I remember back, um, we wanted something that was gonna be kind of maintenance-free, especially with the yellow little things. But, and we went over that quite a bit with, is it gonna be banners? Is it gonna be what? What's the color? What's the look? Do we do different colors? And I, I, I look back and I may have a little different idea on that from the standpoint of some splash. But I think from what we ended up doing, it did kind of give that cool look, but without all that extra that you'd have to deal with. And.
Mr. Perry would call that value engineering.
Right, yeah.
No, one of the things, and I want to commend that council, that, something that surprised the heck out of me. They were going through individual meetings. We discussed, and, and Mr. Brown was part of this. And, and it came up and we're saying, okay, here's where we are. Here's what we need to do to try to make it, I think, get the look we want. Do you want to go one way and value engineer some of these things out of there? Or do you want to go the other way and spend the money that's necessary to make the look be what it is? And it surprised the hell out of me when they said, "Go the way, spend the money and make it happen." It's like, whoa, wait a second. That's completely different than a council I've ever heard before. So, and it wasn't a ton of money, but it was at that last minute going, do you want to spend the money to get the look and the feel that you'll be happy with? And, and from that standpoint, the answer was yes. And it made my job a lot easier. I was pleased to say, oh geez, we get to do that. So. So think about those things. I know that, and, and Mr. Perry had announced it, that the, um, everybody's all ears to hear. There, nobody is sitting there designing things thinking this is what it needs to be or wants to be. You know, the first concept was, you, you turn a world-class architect out there to design what they want to design, you'll get something like that. And that building, the buildings that were designed here was designed by the same people who designed four hundred May, uh, in, in St. Petersburg. That kind of built, that's what they build everywhere. We told them back that, no, that's great. That's your vision. That's not necessarily anybody else's vision, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perry, great job and I think great dialogue from the standpoint of, you know, future, how things go. And then obviously you and I have been talking and looking at, we got everybody's vacation dates, trying to figure out where we can come up with some meetings. Because we need to have meetings, some workshops, maybe on a little further stuff, as well as workshops, probably are getting with the county to have, you know, the homeless part of things. Because the more we can do working with the collaboration as we talked with the city of governments and everything that can continue to help all other little sprinkle things around our town as we heard over in River Isles. And I just want to thank, just, I'll do it later too, but while we're talking about it, is I'd like to thank all the council members and Mr. Perry because it's the first time that we've ever had a full contingent that I've been around here at the Council of Governments. So I think it showed that Bradenton is bought into what we can do as a government and be the leader in our community for future all things. So, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks. I really appreciate everybody's comments and input on those architectural standards and moving towards, towards some presentations that hopefully will check the boxes and meet what we want to get out of the project. Want to talk now about the legislative session? Start with that.
That's an unfinished business?
You want to handle that an unfinished?
Well, but that's where we are anyway.
Sure, sure.
Mayor, if I, may I, before you move on, Mr. Perry, I don't know if you mentioned it in the presentation, but I think it's worth noting to reassure also citizens that you also were moving forward with the traffic study.
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that. It's in the presentation. And I didn't want to belabor, but it's absolutely worth mentioning. I'm glad you brought it up. So we are moving forward with the traffic study. Mr. McClellan has reached out to one of our vendors that does that type of, of traffic study work and all of the associated activities have to go into it. And we're defining a scope for that project. We want to take a look at what traffic impacts of this type of facility and maybe some considerations regarding feedback to give to L and L, the proposed developer as well as council, for sure.
I think if we're going to give a legislative update, that would be under your department head.
Okay.
So let's, let's go ahead because we have, next would be unfinished business. Unless you think it ties to the building here.
One that does tie to the building, I'll just move this, I was going to do this one next, but I'll do it now, which is basically, we, the property that is currently existing, the Herald complex, basically, we have basically gotten with our pre-construction services contractor and come up with some estimates on cost. But that's just part of, I think, the diligence project. What we want to do, Jim and I, and think it's advisable, is bring in the architect that we had basically bought, that we had already done the, put it out on the street proposal. And Sweet Spartman basically was selected. We do not have a contract with Sweet Spartman to do the architecture for any city hall, whether it be in any location at all. But we do have a continuing services contract with Sweet Spartman. And so what we would like to do, and we'll be proceeding, we don't really need any formal action on it, but I thought it was important to bring to your attention because I've always said that this project isn't going to be anywhere before it comes back to council again and the like. But I think I have to kind of point out the difference that they're not doing the architecture per se for a new city hall design as much as they're doing the pre-construction services with HJ High now to further evaluate that proposal of the Herald Building. Things like, when that building was built, it was built to a certain code standard. So they have to do a code study to see, will the code allow us to do these types of construction improvements and the like? And so there's a whole series of additional deeper dive that we want to do to really do the full evaluation and assessment of that existing facility in trying to determine the suitability for the future city hall location. It's obviously thirty-eight thousand square feet. It's a very sizable building. It's a very, very unique downtown valuable location as the site exists currently. But the building, we're kind of drilling down on. And so I'm going to be proceeding under the continuing services contract with Sweet Spartman to do a further, deeper dive onto that. And I'll come back and report accordingly at the right time. Just wanted to let you all know that. See if there's any questions on that.
Thank you.
All right. And then I think that's going to do it under, under new business.
So unfinished business, don't think there's any out there, all right? So we'll go to council reports, starting in Ward Three.
I believe an email went out yesterday from Kelly to council. Next week being Police Week, one of the really highlights of the week is the law enforcement memorial that's presented by the FOP at the historic courthouse. That'll be held Thursday at nine AM. And I hope all can attend.
Definitely.
Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Ward Four?
I will just report that I had a lovely pancake breakfast at River Isles last February twenty-eighth, and they fed me very well. And I enjoyed engaging with that community. They're very involved and I appreciate that. So I just want to report that that went well and I enjoyed meeting more of the River Isle residents. I also will just note, just generally to any citizen here or watching, that, that I am trying to be responsive to emails and phone calls. And many times, just for clarification, that involves me ultimately having to, you know, read the email and then ask questions of, you know, relative staff and then go back and try to be responsive. So just to the extent that any citizen was hoping to get a quicker response, I am definitely diligently trying to pursue responding to emails and phone calls.
All right, thank you. Ward One?
Yeah, I wanted to, I had a wonderful opportunity this past weekend to go to the MPO Advisory Committee training. And I learned a lot about the process with DOT. So I want to thank you for the opportunity for that. And also, I think I mentioned this before, but the Manatee Player, Manatee Performing Arts Center in conjunction with Kauanis is sponsoring a, it's called the Penguin Project, which is working with some, what's the right word? Special needs people to put on Annie. And that performance will start with the adults on Sunday and Monday. And Tuesday and Wednesday will be the children. If you haven't had an opportunity to look at this, it just, it makes my heart, it's just a wonderful opportunity. And I would encourage everyone to go get tickets. They're twenty dollars. And you can imagine the impact that it's having on these children. So I want to encourage you to check it out.
Thank you. Ward Two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to say I'm going to have the privilege of attending the Manatee High Alumni Awards Dinner on this Thursday. There's several individuals that I went to school with that are going to be recognized there. And it's just, it's just a neat time. For those of us that high school might have been a little bit of a struggle at times, it's good to know that life comes out on the other end, so to speak. And I'm just speaking of me personally. I also want to offer sympathy to the family of Brent Ivy. The Ivies grew up, the boys all grew up here. You might remember the Ivy Building, which is now, Mr. Carter owns that property as well. But they, they were wonderful young men growing up in this town. And it seems that we keep losing some of these individuals as time goes on as it's the whole circle of life thing, I guess. And I hesitate to bring this up, but I really think we need to have some discussion about this. I'm getting queries and complaints about the fact that we are not getting our yard waste picked up on a weekly basis. And what is happening now during growing season, you have people that are, they're doing work in their yard and they're putting it at the curb, or they're putting it in the blue bins. And it's not picked up that week. And then they go, the next weekend, they're doing more yard work and they put more there. And then when it finally gets picked up, because it's such a larger amount, they get sent a bill. And I understand if we have individuals that have hired a company to come in to do major tree removals and that sort of thing. And the tree companies are required to take their debris. That's part of the deal. But what is happening is, is if we're not getting stuff picked up in a timely fashion and there's more work being done by the yard, by the homeowners, we need to have a discussion about this policy because I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right if it's our individual homeowners are doing the work and we said that we were going to go to the recycle areas to be able to save yard waste pickup. And we're not, we're not being as successful as we should be with that. So I don't know if anybody else has had anybody calling them, any complaints coming to you. But I'm getting an earful. And I felt like the council, I needed the council's guidance and input on this.
Yeah, Josh?
I have received numerous emails, but when they come, I've addressed them with Mr. McClellan and he's trying to get them all handled, case by case. I could let him speak more to it if he'd like.
Ms. Kooper?
Yeah, I would say same thing. He's been able to address them anytime anybody's contacted me. But it does seem like it's getting to be every week now. I know, I don't think, my neighborhood was picked up last week. And it was supposed to be picked up yesterday. And when I left this morning, it was still there, so.
Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So we've recently gone through a short stretch where we've had a number of people out sick, a number of people. We've continued to maintain about a six to nine vacancies within solid waste. So we're in a rotation period of new drivers coming in. There's people learning routes. It creates issues. I've had conversations with Mr. Cho about the fact that if we're behind in a particular week associated with it, then we should not be issuing any bills to anybody for a large pile. The intent of the billing on the large piles was for those people that go out and clear their backyard completely and bring out materials that result in us having to take a boom truck out in order to collect the materials versus what can be collected by the individuals on the back of the truck. So it's a work in progress that we're trying to get to. And I will continue to handle the cases as they come. And Mr. Cho and I will work on finalizing something a little bit more formal as it relates to the process by which the billing occurs.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I think another big complaint has been that nobody answers the phone and is getting in touch with someone. And I don't know, I don't know if there's a staffing issue there as well, but I get that a lot.
There was not, we had about a one-week period where we had one, only one person answering the phones in Solid Waste as somebody had left. Part of the issue that we incur at Solid Waste is they receive a lot of calls. And so if two people are answering the phones and two people are on the phone when the phone call comes in, then they may not have somebody answer the phone. We ask that people leave a message and we will call them back. Sometimes people are not calling Solid Waste. Sometimes they're calling utility billing, thinking that's the proper place to call. So what we try to do each time is if somebody contacts me and says, I've been trying to reach Solid Waste, our system tells us if the phone number that somebody called is calling from, called us. And we try to verify that. Because again, even if they're calling and they don't leave a message, if we see that they called, we will try to call them back and find out what the issue was. So sometimes that's what happens.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Coachman?
I just want to add on that. Fortunately for me, my neighbors nearby, they pretty much still understand that we have shortages. But I do at times have to text Jim and say, ah, the bags have been out a couple of weeks and they're always taken care of within that next morning. So I know you're doing the best you can with what we got to work with. Sorry I was out of order. I tried to get back. I heard you tying up. I just want to kind of reiterate something that the mayor spoke of a little earlier. And that's the last Council of Governments meeting. I've gone to a few of their quarterly meetings. But I have to say that one was definitely the first one that I felt like it was fruitful and that all of the governments were listening and considering all the different ways how we can help or how we can put our resources together to solve some of the difficulties we have. Number one, with homelessness and affordable housing. So it was really, you felt like it was a council of governments. Not to say that the other meetings weren't, you know, beneficial, but that definitely had to be the number one out of the ones I've attended. The only other thing I might, I wanted to mention, I pretty much put it in my council corner, but it hasn't been put out yet. But I want everyone to be mindful of some of the wonderful holidays coming up. Well, number one, it's not a holiday, but it's exciting. School will be out soon. So do please be, you know, aware that the little darlings are going to be out and about. They don't always play video games inside. Sometimes they're outside. But just be aware that the little darlings will be out and about. You know, drive carefully, look out for them. And holidays I was talking about. Well, I do, this is a little early, but I do want to mention that the Juneteenth Festival will be taking place again this year. And I don't have the dates right in front of me. June seventeenth, I think, is the festival's date. But it'll be in the, in the Bradenton update soon. And it will be on the website, I'm sure, I mean, Facebook and website. But it's definitely going to be bigger and better than it was last year. And it's just such a great opportunity for all of us to come together, celebrate, commemorate Juneteenth, which was when, at least on paper, every citizen, every American was free. So it's a great time to enjoy. And hurricane season's coming up. And I won't go through all this other stuff because I did have a lot this time. But I won't belabor that. We've got more time to talk about it.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman. Just a couple things. Pace Center for Girls has their big ducky situation in our city, in our river, at Caddy's on Saturday. So there's thousands, ten thousands of ducks in there. So if you're out and around, come out to Pace Center at Caddy's. It's three-thirty on Saturday and see the excitement there. Mixon Fruit Farm is having their big celebration on Saturday night. Kind of their going away, even though they don't officially close till July. But there's going to be a little event out there Saturday night, five-thirty, I think to nine-thirty. I'm going to be speaking. And a lot of opportunities there. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep monitoring that, what's going on and see how, if any, the city will be involved in the future. But, you know, opportunity comes up, you check it out and you see what happens. So we're excited about that. Sad that the Mixons are having to change the way that the model is there, but that's just insurance, fruit, everything else. This isn't the same as what it used to be. And then, May nineteenth, one hundred and twenty years, the city of Bradenton will be old. So we're going to celebrate that at the farmer's market, excuse me, public market. Some of those old names are hard to always, but the public- Some of those old names are hard to always, but the public market, so, you know, look forward to more stuff on that on our Facebook and that. And so exciting, exciting things, and we're going to keep working on a lot of the things we talked about here. And as I said earlier, the council of governments was the most productive meeting we've had in my ten years here. So, but it was engaged, and it was a topic that we all need to know about and that we all have to work with, so. All right, so we'll move on to department heads. Chief Beavens? We're not ready to dig yet.
Just wanted to bring some props. On the heels of what y'all are saying about the council of governments, if you all go to events with the other chiefs and the sheriff, now you know that we work very closely together. We have just an incredible relationship that you really don't see in a lot of places. One of the things that you may be seeing in the weeks to come, and thanks to all of you who were able to attend the promotion ceremony, Monday will mark a transition period within the department. We're moving people to some new assignments. Two of those assignments are to join forces with Manatee County Sheriff's Office on their violent crimes task force. Summer is coming, and we felt that one of the best ways to tackle that was to come together and us put some folks within and embed them within that unit, and so you may see a few more deputy cars in our city. You're going to see some of our cars in their county, and, and that's why. It's, we're working together. As the sheriff and I always say, bad guys don't say, "Oh, wait a minute, this is the jurisdiction for Braynton, and this is the county, and this is Palmetto." It's, we're all being impacted largely probably by the same folks who are just kind of zigzagging, and so something, something you'll probably see. And I just wanted to give a quick update. Only a few people traveled the hour out to this location. The good news is, is it's been confirmed that an easement has been acquired from Taylor Road, and so it, it won't be quite so bad. You know, we're expecting the commute to be about forty minutes in the future when we break ground on this, and
We broke ground the other day.
Well, the official break ground, the unofficial break ground, but the official break ground, I have a pretty cool shovel, and, you know, Cynthia Saunders is leaving. She told me she's not going to take her shovel with her, and so I'm actually going to get another shovel. We can maybe mount out there, and we'll figure out what to do with this shovel, but I think, what is it, at the end of, you know, being mayor and council, whoever has the most shovels wins when it comes to development. I mean, that's always a great thing. Really a great facility. For those of you who can kind of see this, it's going to have a three hundred by six hundred driving pad, the first of its kind in Manatee County. Currently, we have to go up to St. Pete. The college has to go up to St. Pete for training. We're going to have pistol range. We're going to have a rifle range, something you haven't seen before. We're going to have a shoot house. What's the shoot house, you may say? It's a house with movable walls, and so folks, our officers, when I say our officers, I'm talking about officers within this whole region. And in fact, I had a meeting, we might have bi-monthly meetings with FDLE leadership. They came down here, and I showed them this, very excited. So the offices in this region, they're already asking if they can take advantage of this. In the shoot house, trains our folks on active shooter responses, hostage rescues, and it's an ever-changing environment where they can really get some great development out there. We're very excited. It's due to be finished in summer of 2024. This was money, because I always like to give accolades where it is. Then Senator Bill Galvano with Representative Gregory, we're able to get the Governor DeSantis to sign off on this two million dollar appropriation for us. And then the school board stepped up with the latest step up being the easement, which is costing them an additional million dollars. So I think I'll told this, the price tag on this is going to be just under six million, but the city of Braynton gave seventy acres. And so it's, it's going to be a fantastic opportunity with room to build, room to expand, and certainly a, a great legacy. I'll have this in the back if anybody wants to take a look, and it's going to be posted over at the police department.
One of the good things too is that there was a comment on one of the social medias that, "Where are all the trees in the pictures?" Well, we didn't take down any trees to do it. It's all farmland. There was all cattle and stuff. So just for the public to know, you know, we're not taking down any trees. We're building around and, and doing that. So that was important, and we're probably going to be adding trees, you know, with some of the, some of the things. And whenever you can do a collaboration where virtually it costs you zero dollars, I'm in. And this, other than us donating seventy acres of a parcel of six hundred-plus acres we have, and to help our law enforcement, you know, young and old for the future, so, and not old, but.
Absolutely, and I, I don't often thank attorneys, but, you know, I know Scott and, you know, Paul Driscoll with your firm, and him worked with the school board attorneys, and we couldn't have gotten there without you. A lot of back and forth and back and forth. This started in 2020, and so it's, it's taken us a while, but yeah, you're, you're right, Mayor. We got out there, and everybody was all smiles and getting along, and what a great project when everybody feels like they've won. And so thanks to you for all your work with that, Scott.
All right, thank you. All the lawyers. Any other department heads? And I'm sure Jim will bring up our illustrious parks that opened, and another one that's going to be opening soon.
We have a park that opened? First off, I just wanted to make everybody aware. On Friday the nineteenth, Keep Manatee Beautiful has organized and will be conducting the first, which will hopefully be an annual event, of dive cleaning in the Manatee River. So it'll be occurring from nine thirty in the morning until about one o'clock in the afternoon. So I encourage you all to have the opportunity to come down and take a look and see what the heck gets taken out of the river.
Been a lot of years, they said, so it'll be interesting.
I'm going to be, please come down because I have some really fast jet skis, and we'll be putting them in the water to do the cleanup, and if you'd like a ride at seventy-five miles an hour on a jet ski. Take it for a ride.
I don't think you can, can?
There will be, there will be, there will be multiple divers actually going down, pulling the material up, and then there will be
hooking to the jet skis and then slowly towing it.
Kayaks.
Slowly towing it to the shoreline.
So we will be having a dumpster on our side for the material to go into. It will be located down in the plaza area next to the skate park, just so everybody's aware of what's going on. And in addition, happy to announce that the splash pad, our playgrounds, and the Rossi Park Circle are all open and fully operational for everybody to enjoy. Initial assessments from everybody is they're very happy with the way it looks, the way it feels, the way it works, and everybody is happy to have it back in operation. We, we scheduled it to be able to start once everything, all the events that, that we have in the park. So we had a tight window to shove it into. We scheduled it for six weeks, and in six weeks, we had it back open. So everything worked as planned, and we're thankful to the contractor for their help. We're doing a final walkthrough with the contractor. It was scheduled for today. It got delayed till tomorrow to develop a final punch list of any additional items to address, but I think you should, I'll take great pride in what you approved, and it's a, it's going to be a jewel for the city.
Lewis Park?
Lewis Park, the, we're still shooting to be able to have an opening near the end of May. The playgrounds are, the five to twelve and the two to five-year-old playground areas are essentially complete. The one last thing we have to do is we have to have them raise up the WeGo swing, which is the, actually the one that, in which the wheelchairs can ride in. Needs to be raised up about a half an inch in order to make room for the forever lawn to go underneath it without creating any friction on it. The swing sets are in, so there we're working with to get the forever lawn placed underneath those. The fencing has been installed around both of those areas. Landscaping has started this week, so tree planting has been occurring. And we're, we're also scheduling a walkthrough with the contractor on that this week to get scheduled for everything and nail down that final schedule for when we can have an opening for the park. And the new sign that the Rotary is coordinating is now about a week and a half out. So that, hopefully we can coordinate that getting in, but we're not going to hold up anything waiting on the sign from that standpoint.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I just want to give a shout out to Jim's team on Rossi Park and Lewis Park, and, you know, it was some pain in putting the projects together and getting them to a certain point, but once we got going on them, Ross Peterson and his team down there did a good job of implementing the project and overseeing the contractors, and ultimately, you know, getting the park opened on time, on budget, on schedule. And it's just a beautiful park. I, I go down there, you know, pretty much several times a week when I run, and I've just been stopping this week, talking with people, and they're like, "It's awesome what you guys have done." And they, they went above and beyond because little, we always talk about the details. Who's our detail guy? How do we make sure that we ask the right questions? Don't check off the punch list unless it's really completed. And, you know, it's the details and everything, because everybody's moving on to the next project or whatever it is. Things like the benches themselves that are around the splash pad, they were a little bit worn. They were all one color. And, and they took them out and they had them all power coated, a different color. There's a lot of little things there that you don't notice that I think that organizationally cultured those folks are really trying to go to the next level, take the extra step, spend the extra time. That's what, you know, and we've got, we're putting a lot on them. Public Works has a lot on them in a lot of different ways, but it was so good to see Ross, the smile on his face when, when, when we were talking about it. I think it was Friday morning, and he was talking about opening it and everything, and it's just a real gem, and they did a great job. So thank you for that, Jim, and, you know, Downtown Action Team is an initiative we've done as well, and I hope the downtown Main Street's looking a little bit better, so.
I would also tell you that as far as the overall Riverwalk Extension Project, we're basically in the final stage. Ninth Avenue East has been completed and is opened, has been repaved. The streetlights are in, the landscaping is in. Sidewalks are all complete, the parking spaces, the curbing, and it looks great. Sixth Street East from Caddy's out to Manatee Avenue has been completed, other than the final paving and a couple of parking spaces to be regraded, but that's about a week and a half out for the paving on that. Contractor currently is working on the modifications along Manatee Avenue between Sixth Street and Ninth Street East, where we're modifying some of the planters along the roadway to enhance those, put upgraded irrigation in there so that the materials that we do put in can be maintained in a better fashion than, than has occurred in the past. So all in all, I would say they're well ahead of schedule. The intent was to be completed by the first of September. I would be shocked if we're not in a better position by easily the end of July to be able to have most everything up and running.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I mean, we can't get an answer to this right now, but we've kind of touched on it already, but, you know, we took a lot of hits on the recycling, going to not curbside, and then we put the bins out. But the bins, at least in my ward, are becoming a real issue because they are turned into just dumpsters for everything, and furniture and all that. I, I don't know what we're going to do, but we got to stop that.
We've, we've had some conversations about that with Mr. Perry in our Monday morning meetings about some of the approaches. In the past, we have tried putting out some cameras. Cameras get stolen. But we're working on some ideas to help address that.
Yeah, it's just, it's getting worse each time.
Can I ask, do you, do you have a sense, because I also have had some calls about the dumpsters or the, the containers, do you have a sense that it's trash, or do you have a sense that it is?
No, what's happening for the most part is, is that we're seeing people decide, "Oh, well, there's a container there. I, I can get rid of my couch." So I don't have to pay my, my fee to have it.
Or construction debris.
Yeah, we had, we had one container where somebody actually pried open the top, broke it, and then put a tree in there. I mean, that takes a lot of effort.
We need to get some better cameras that they can't steal.
Yeah, it's going to be multifaceted effort, you know, to do that.
And I don't know, do we have the ability to fine? Do we have to do anything?
It is illegal dumping, and it is finable.
Okay.
You just got to catch the people.
And post it, and, because they're probably not even citizens of the city of Braynton. It could be county residents.
I, I'm not opposed to having, having, hiring a staff person to sit there on the weekends, because that's when most of it seems to be occurring, to say, "This is not, you cannot dump this."
We'll be working on it.
We'll work on the process. All right, thank you, Jim. Ms. Singer?
Over time, we've been having discussions with individuals interested in developing the downtown area and speaking particularly of the area west of First Street and north of Eighth Avenue. And in that area, we have two primary zoning districts. One is the T-Funk.
Ms. Singer, I hate to stop you, but we got a hard stop time at eleven.
Okay.
So do you think that this is something we can get through now, or?
Um, I, it's just an introduction. What I'm actually asking is that I'll probably send out an email on this describing in more detail what it is we're looking at, and I appreciate the opportunity to sit down and talk to you about it individually, because I think that gives, allows us more time. I plan on bringing it up publicly at your next meeting, but if we have time to sit down and talk about it, we can go into the, and you may have ideas for it as well.
I think it's important to talk to each individual.
Yes.
So, so it'd be to get with her about density.
Yes.
And zoning downtown, and that's going to be very important for the future as we grow.
We just want to let you know it's coming.
Coming, so, and I hate to cut you off, but
No, that's okay.
Because we're probably going to have to recess at eleven and come back.
Okay.
At one thirty.
That's fine.
Because we've got a, a topic that we need to discuss that is not, and you, and you'll have to be here for that also.
Okay.
So I don't think we can discuss it in two minutes, so. All right, thank you.
Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Yeah, Mother's Day. Any other department head before, and I hate to do it, but we have to do it, so.
How old do you think, sorry, how old do you think this discussion is?
I mean, it could be a long one.
It's hard to say how much you guys want to discuss it. Probably at least ten minutes, fifteen minutes.
Well, if we can try to get it done in five or ten minutes and not rushing and have to come back, so. Mr. Perry, why don't you give us a synopsis in a Perry Minute?
Sure. It takes ten minutes, but the short version is, is that we have the restaurant that had applied for building permits to do a sizable new restaurant down on Forty-third Street, basically in Manatee Avenue. With that, the city issued building permits. The adjacencies are the State Road, Manatee Avenue, and Forty-third Street, which is a county road. There was a site improvement plan that was filled. It had off-site improvements, particularly on that county road, and, and all types of realignments to mitigate traffic concerns, public safety concerns. Jesse P. Miller is right across the street to the east, St. Stevens to the north, and of course, Manatee High nearby and the like. It's a high-traffic area. Well, those plans were basically, the engineering for those plans had been approved from the county, because it is a county road, since January, I believe. We do the building inspection to see if the building is up to standards and the site itself onsite, and it meets those standards thus far. They are operating under a, a temporary order that allows them to, to operate, and that basically allows them to stock food and do training under their certificate of occupancy. Typically, they would, once completed with all their upgrades, would come and get a permanent certificate of occupancy. And with that SIP, they basically have to do the off-site improvements, which are demobilization lanes, traffic calming, and, and some turning bays on from Forty-third into the Manatee Avenue westbound direction and the like. They've had these permits, so they've known about it forever. They've been approved to do it since January. They didn't do it. They breached their agreement. And so we have a problem right now. And everybody wants them to open, I think, you know, it's a business. We approved the business. We approved our side of the agreement. They made an agreement, and, and on those improvements, those off-site improvements, they're not done. And to that extent, they're
uh, they're advertising that they're going to be opening, I believe, tomorrow. Is it Thursday? Yeah, tomorrow and the like. And, um, we have to ensure public safety and hold them up to their agreement. We've asked them to provide, basically, the county an acceptable plan for when they're going to do those off-site improvements. Can you at least tell us when? We want it done, of course, with the school season ending, the school year ending at the end of May. Um, we'd like it done before school starts. That's pretty reasonable, since it should've been done already. Nope. Can't guarantee that. Well, how about giving us a liquidated penalty provision to the county so that there's a financial incentive? There's no agreement thus far. I went to the county commission meeting yesterday and just talked with a couple of folks, and that's where I understand the status of it is. At that, I'll put it back to Mayor.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, this is in my ward, and I do want to state for the record that my vote to allow them to do this was predicated on the fact that they were going to do these improvements in that area, that they were going to do the deceler, at least do the deceleration lane so that we don't have traffic backed up across Manatee Avenue and down Manatee Avenue. And they have not held up their end of the bargain. I'm, I'm very disappointed, and public safety is primary in, in city government. And again, and yes, we said we gave them a temporary CO to stock items and do some training. They basically had a soft opening last night and invited friends and family to come in, and they cooked food. And I don't know what we have to do to get the attention of corporate, the corporate organization, but it's very disheartening, and I'm very disappointed in the way that they have chosen to treat the city of Bradenton.
I'm gonna stop for a second. Mr. Rudicell, are we, uh, on solid footing if, to not give them a CO to open up tomorrow without the site improvement plans that were agreed upon, that were supposed to be done before they opened?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Perry briefed me right before the meeting. I have not been engaged on this issue at all at this point, so I really can't opine on that, um, right now, but I would be happy to, to look into it.
And ju- just at that point, county legal has been handling the, the off-site improvements because, um, that being a county road, I think it is at a point where Mr. Rudicell will have to engage with county legal and, and, and policy administration, myself, to look at legal options. Just, I, I, I mean, we have a certificate of occupancy that, that's temporary. I don't know if they intend to just ignore, um, uh, their obligations and continue and just open tomorrow morning. If that does take place, I would imagine, um, equitable restraint for, by, uh, an injunction, a temporary injunction, and an application for a permanent injunction until these improvements are made, and probably penalties, sanctions, and the like. We don't wanna go in that direction. It's, it's a hard direction, but at the same time, as you pointed out, we have a corporation who really designs and builds these things and then turn it over to the local franchisee, the owner. And, uh, it's a switch, you know, he's in a switch. I, I, I'm sympathetic, but the folks in Atlanta, um, they need to comply with, with their obligations. And if not, we have to seek legal mechanisms to ensure that.
May I ask a question?
Um, Ms. Coker was first, and then Ms. Moore.
Uh, I was just going to basically reiterate what Councilwoman Barnaby. I think I was more in favor of it, trusting that I believed Chick-fil-A to be a, you know, honorable, you know, and would do what they were promising and would have this handled. So I feel, um, I'm very disappointed and, um, I, 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 public safety has to be first.
Ms. Moore?
Didn't we recently approve, are there stipulations to the approval of their site plan, and didn't we give them some leeway in connection with the operation of the drive-thru recently to?
Yeah, for onsite.
So does that, I mean, have we, those stipulate, and my question is, I guess as a matter of law, do those stipulations give us any footing to either?
Yeah, your, your recollection is correct. They came, they came back to the council and asked to amend the stipulations related to their, um, special use permit. So that is something we gotta go back and see what exactly that stipulation language is and what kind of, um.
That was for us being able to close their drive-up.
Right.
Right, but it does not deal with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and the SIP, uh, stipulations that were tenet there too, which are off-site improvements.
So, and again, a couple of options here is, if we feel that we just say, "It's not met, there's no CO issued, so they can't open," or, you know, in, in good faith, which again, we've already done that, is there a way to give them a temporary CO while the county continues to work towards the goal of being with the, at least the decel lane, um, done by school starting, which I think, I, I'm confident that's the goal of Chick-fil-A Atlanta, and, 'cause the county's got another whole project that's probably gonna be two to three years down the road to redo the whole intersection. But if the decel lane's done, that at least gets the immediate cars off of the southbound lane. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's a no-win situation for us, you know, because.
And we're getting blamed for this.
Either way.
And it is not the city's fault. It is absolutely on Chick-fil-A Corporate. Absolutely.
But to what end? You know, I mean, I don't know.
Well, and my question is, if we offer them a temporary CO, can we give them, can we make that so that it, it is, they, trying to figure out how the correct way to say it, for a specific period of time in which they better get that agreement done, and if they're not, if it's not done by that point, can we rescind it?
The, the answer to the question is yes. We could extend a temporary certificate of occupancy with special conditions. However, I think you have to be practically mindful that it is probably more difficult to open a restaurant and then close it, opposed to just saying, "You don't open until you're, you're ready."
Well, this is all on them. They can make the choice.
And, and, and they're, they're, it, it, it's a, a Hobbs choice. Neither of them are good choices, but, but it is an option.
To work out an agreement with the county that we would be satisfied with would have to be done by two weeks from yesterday, because that's when the county meets again for their county commission to vote on it. So the question is, are we willing to close them for two weeks and not let them open, or give them the benefit of the doubt with a temporary CO, saying if the agreement isn't made by next two weeks from yesterday, that we will be pulling the CO?
Question. Have they given any reason why they haven't done this?
They've been negotiating with the county. It's the county roadway, and, uh, I, why they have not done it specifically.
There was some things missed.
I, I, I don't.
There was some things missed.
By, by them or the?
And Chick-fil-A.
And the county?
I, I think, again, it's whose side you're on. I've been asking for months to people about it, and we had a meeting six weeks ago, and it's, it's very difficult, you know, I mean.
All right.
And, and again, it's not us, and it's not the proprietor, but it affects us and the proprietor.
I agree that if you open that store, you don't close it.
It's gonna be hard, yeah.
It's, I mean, I, whether we say they're open or not, people think they're opening tomorrow, there's gonna be a line of cars waiting.
Well, I, I think this sounds like it could get litigious, so I would hope that whatever we're doing, we're.
Well, they, and they're confident that they can stack fifty-two cars.
Not about on top of property.
But it's not, it doesn't have anything.
It's about getting on the property.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if they're thinking, "Oh, well, we can still handle this," and that, that's not the case.
Does anybody remember what happened when Del Taco opened?
And Del Taco was a week long. Chick-fil-A will be for the rest of our life long, because it's not gonna slow down.
As I said in the, the public hearing, the only time there will not be a traffic problem at that Chick-fil-A is on Sunday when they are closed.
So, that's why I thought this would take longer than, uh.
Yeah, it did.
I thought, so.
Would you like to come back and discuss it?
And I think maybe if Mr. Rudicell can get a little bit more information, can you get that in the next two hours?
I will do what I can.
All right, so, um, we're gonna recess until one thirty.
Mayor Council back in session on the Chick-fil-A, uh, certificate of occupancy, and, um, we've had some opportunities to, um, uh, consider options and appropriate paths forward and, and talk with Scott, who's talked with some folks at Chick-fil-A and, and otherwise. And, uh, there's a few things I think that we should, uh, begin with, which we all recognize and hope that this was resolved prior to the opening, um, as it relates to the, the acceleration lane and the off-site improvements. Uh, there is different, uh, factors that are related to it. It is within the agreement with the county, um, as it relates to the county's, uh, um, roadway, Forty-third Street itself, and really, we think that, um, we wanna try to, to get a situation that brings about the heightened degree of, 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 of traffic and, uh, alignment and public safety and the like, and do it within the, the parameters of the submitted and approved plans. That being said, um, I, I think that it's probably an issue that needs to remain administratively opposed to a vote by council. It really isn't the council's position to vote for, um, a certificate of occupancy or not. That is handled through the planning department pursuant to our, um, ordinances and the appropriate regulations within the department. I recognize the, uh, the grave concern by council. I, I certainly do, and I'm very, uh, uh, aware and, and, and equally share in that. Um, I think I'm going to be trying to talk with our folks at, uh, planning to assure that, uh, any sort of approval is predicated upon, um, those safety concerns being addressed. And I, and I would probably defer to Mr. Rudicell to maybe opine a little bit on the, uh, the authority and, uh, proper handling of the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, uh, just following up on what Mr. Perry said, you know, we have a system, a process of approvals that go in order, and at each step, they get reviewed essentially for compliance with your, uh, land development regulations, Florida Building Code, those sorts of things. And so that is, after that, uh, special use permit was issued, that was a public hearing before the council, everything after that is administrative, and there's really no role for the council to come in at this point, and nor should we put you in that position to do that. Um, so we will review it at the staff level. We heard the concerns. We understand what they are. Um, I will tell you that what I was told from Chick-fil-A directly today at lunch was that they have a commitment from their contractor now to complete the improvements within the timeframe, and so they are confident that they will get an agreement with the county. Um, and so we, I, I, I think that that will be one of the areas that we are looking at, at this point, is, um, addressing a binding agreement with the county related to the timing of that deceleration lane, and, um, we will look to incorporate that into the, into the approvals.
So I just wanna confirm, you said while you were at Chick-fil-A for lunch today, or you said while you were talking to them? [laughing] While you were talking to them at lunch.
This was on the phone. I did not, uh, I did not stop in for a sandwich at lunch today, so, um, the other thing to keep in mind is, we do have provisions in that special use permit that was approved by the city council that do, that does give staff and the council the ability to go back to Chick-fil-A if things are not working from a traffic circulation standpoint and require them to make changes in how they are doing things, so that we can, you know, cutting off access points or, um, having them have somebody out there to direct traffic or, you know, whatever it may be. The, there are a lot of options on the table if there are actual issues once they are open and that can come back to the council, um, to the extent that it needs to.
And I think the most important thing for all of us to really think about is, this was never about the local Chick-fil-A proprietor. It was never about the city council. It was more about public safety, and that was one of the things that I know for the last several months, that the county, as well as basically Atlanta, because Atlanta is who built that for Chick-fil-A. So it was always about doing the right thing for our citizens, but making sure at this point that it gets done in a timely manner, and we're fortunate that school is almost out and the traffic is, um, a lot less for a couple of months. So it was more about getting that done, to work together on it while celebrating the Chick-fil-A in our town, because that's never been about not having a Chick-fil-A in West Bradenton. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, I would like to have a number for Chick-fil-A Corporate, so whenever I get phone calls from people yelling at me about how, how unhappy they are, I can give them a number and a name to contact in Atlanta. I'm not joking.
She's not kidding.
I, I have a name for you.
Okay.
All right, so I think we have direction, Mr. Perry, and anything else for the good of the board?
Sure.
All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.